Good evening and welcome to our Board of Commissioners meeting for November 17th, 2021. We have two items that are on our agenda, Finance Committee meeting and as well as our official Board of Commissioners meeting. I do apologize for those of you who are here for our late start. There were a couple of items that we had to take care of and we'll mention what those topics were when we get to the Board of Commissioners meeting. But before we begin, there's another tragedy has hit our township, as I'm sure many of you are aware, that unfortunately, the principal of Lower Marion High School, Shawn Hughes, was tragically killed in an automobile accident over the weekend while taking his son to a soccer game. I did not have the privilege of knowing Principal Hughes, but I have not heard anything other than extreme superlatives about him. And what I'd like to do, because I'd feel awkward stating something other than that which the school district put out and sent to my attention, and it's just so touching and fitting, so if I may, I apologize for reading. This was shared with the entire community. Mr. Hughes was beloved by thousands of students who passed through the halls of Lower Marion over the years. He knew most of them by name and always had time to listen to their concerns, cheer them on, and support their accomplishments. They greeted him in the halls by calling out his signature name, Hughes. He welcomed each one at ninth grade orientation and proudly handed out diplomas at graduation. In the years between he emceed their amazing ACE competitions in his gold jacket, inducted students into National Honor Society, recognized merit scholars, he encouraged student voice at every turn. The door to his office was always open, and many will carry his message of character counts. Throughout their lives, it's not an overstatement to say, his impact on the students was immeasurable. So, we feel for his family, his wife Kristy, and children, and I'd ask if you all be so kind just to rise for a moment of silence for the Hughes family and the school family which he served so well. That will then bring us to our first agenda item, which is our Finance Committee. And with that, before we begin, because this is going to concern some issues relating to the American Rescue Plan and what we're going to do with the fact that the township has received considerable amount of funds, that we have the awesome responsibility of figuring out how best to apply them. So I just want to let you all know what the process was before we got here. What we did was, we have a Finance Committee which is comprised of Vice President Gavron, Commissioner Zeloff, and Commissioner McComb. And as part of the process that we of the Board of Commissioners have of trying to delegate to individual groups or committees to come back to all of us, we had our Finance Committee collect and collate a lot of the recommendations from each of us, and a lot of us got them from all of you and from others, so that it could be presented in a coherent fashion for us to review and consider. You need a better wordsmith than I to actually pay the compliments that are deserved for Vice President Gavron, Commissioner Zeloff, and Commissioner McComb for the work that they did to assist all of us in this process. It has really been nothing but outstanding and stellar. So, I am going to turn this over to Vice President Gavron, who is going to be handling this part of the Finance Committee, but I wanted just to start out to thank the three of them for a lot of work, as well as our staff, our manager, our CFO, who has assisted us in this process, and I have no doubt, we have a lot to discuss from this point forward. Vice President Gavron.
Thank you, President Bernheim. As President Bernheim said, we have our Finance Committee, we have a pretty short, simple agenda with only four items on it, which I'm sure we'll breeze through quickly. The first one is the appointment of our township auditor. So I will start it by making a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners the appointment of Zelen...
Zelenkovsky.
Zelenkovsky Axorod LLC as the township's auditor to provide an independent audit of all township funds for an initial contract term of January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022, at a total fixed cost of $76,100, with the option to renew for four additional 12-month terms. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. We will kick this off with a brief presentation from our CFO, Eric Traub. Eric, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Vice President Gavron. So we do RFPs for Township Auditor Services every four or five years. We receive six responses to our RFP. Four of those firms were deemed technically proficient, and basically that means is, we gave them, you know, in the way that we do the scoring, not only a technical score, but also a cost score, basically meaning they were above the cut line for a consideration for an award. You have what I feel is a pretty comprehensive memo in front of you on the process, the review process, the scoring, the firms. It basically ended up being a two-horse race between Clifton Larson Allen, who's been our current auditor, I believe, since 2013, and then Zelenkovsky Axorod, or ZA for short. ZA was a finalist the last time we did this RFP in 2016. They had a very strong proposal, a strong team, very positive references. They do similar work in Bucks County and Radnor, City of Allentown, Middletown Township, Lower Paxton Township, was a pretty large suburban municipality in the Harrisburg area, Chester and Allegheny Counties. We were impressed when our selection committee met with them via Zoom, and we felt that overall, they had a slight edge on the technical side, and also it was obviously beneficial that they're a little bit more cost-effective. They're about $7,100 less than what we paid for our audit this year. CLA has been a really good firm, they've done good work for the township. When I spoke to them, I said, you know, you can still put me down as a reference or anything else of that nature, and it's good to know that we still have good firms in the area. This is only a one-year contract. It is the recommendation of the selection committee, along with consulted with the township manager, to move forward with ZA. Based on that performance, it is the township's sole option to do any or all of the renewal terms, which would be kept at CPI moving forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you, Eric. Before we get into Commissioner comments and questions, do we have any public comment on this? Seeing none, we'll move to Commissioner comments and questions. Any Commissioner comments or questions? Commissioner Zeloff.
Thank you, thank you, Vice President Gavron. I don't think any of us know this new firm, which is a good thing. I just want to say that Clifton Larson Allen did a fine job for eight years as our outside auditor. They are independent, the new firm is independent, and I think we have great regard for the process of having independent financials and audits done of the many, many accounts that are in this township, including our library system. So I look forward to working with this new independent auditor. Thank you.
Commissioner Zeloff, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call it for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, this passes unanimously. Before we move on to the second motion, I just want to second what our CFO said and thank Clifton Larson Allen for their outstanding work as township auditors. You know, from my discussions with township staff and management, this shift had nothing to do with the reflection on their work, the great work that they've done through the years, but rather, really, the fiscally appropriate move is as a result of our public bidding process. So, thank you to CLA for all the work that they've done for our township. The second item, and that was the only item on our agenda that actually is, we will have a motion for, the other three items are a discussion, so there will be no motion here. This next item, which is about our 2022 Equipment Fund Asset Replacement Purchases, this is an annual discussion we usually have in Q1, but we've moved it up a couple of months due to supply chain issues that we're seeing, which may close ordering windows kind of sooner than normal, which will allow staff, by having it now, to order the normal equipment, or the needed equipment that, you know, if possible during open windows. I'm going to ask staff to break this into two, this discussion into two parts. The first is really an overview of the overall request of the 39 vehicles, including a view on whether alternative fuel vehicles are a realistic option, because that's something all of us on the board and many of our residents are certainly clamoring for. Once we get through that, we'll have comments, questions on that part, and the second part of the discussion will be something that kind of annually for the past couple of years, we've had a lot more discussion on, which is the question of the light-use vehicles for our building and planning staff, and whether, you know, it makes more sense to convert them from existing police vehicles or purchase new alternative fuel vehicles. But I'd like to split those up to make this discussion a little bit easier. So, Eric, I believe you're going to handle this presentation?
Yeah, I'm going to lead off. We have our Director of Public Works, Paul McLehaney, with us, and also our Fleet Manager, Mr. Pete Multeria is with us, and then we'll probably handle mostly that section, and we move to Part Two, we'll have our Sustainability Manager, I'm sure, kind of walk through the issues surrounding the second question. So, as Vice President Gavron spoke about, normally this is a early in the calendar year thing, because of the changes in our world and supply chains and all of those fun things that everyone can read about a lot right now, we're having a lot of difficulty getting vehicles, and Mr. Multeria can tell you a lot about what he's been doing and how he's been trying to harvest old vehicles to keep, to repair current vehicles and things of that nature. But what we're basically anticipating is roughly about a four-to-six week window in which we can order new vehicles, occurring sometime over beginning and sometime in the next two to three weeks. So that's why we wanted to bring this list before the Board now, to get any feedback, any direction, or things of that nature. So you have a memo, specifically referencing the memo that's prepared by myself, and Mr. McLehaney on this topic talks about how the Equipment Fund works, how it is funded, why we're doing this now. In terms of the vehicle list that's there, there's 39 replacement assets, vehicles, and major equipment, that's down a little bit from 35 last year, or actually, it's up from 35 last year, but the price is down because last year, we had several large trash or recycling trucks. Those are quite expenses, so without those, the cost is actually down a little bit in comparison to previous years. Obviously, there's the issue of the discussion of alternative fuel vehicles, which I'm sure the Board will get into in some degree, in some depth. In terms of where we go from now, what we're looking for is, generally, the Equipment Fund is still in the same general shape it's been for about the last three or four years. We still have a stable cash and investment balance, so we're still able to keep that funding level at the 50% of general fund where it's been for roughly 10 years now. You know, what's really, what we'd like to do now is basically kind of, if you have any questions on the Equipment Fund vehicle and major equipment replacement list, on the process that staff goes through to work with the various departments, to discuss and decide what is necessary in terms of how many police vehicles to, what do we need in the highway crew, what do we need in terms of dump trucks, snow and ice equipment, things of that nature, or in terms of how we're going to procure any of those sort of things. I'd be happy to answer any questions in tandem with Mr. McLehaney or Mr. Multeria.
Great, thank you very much, Eric. We'll start again with any public comments on this issue? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, any online comments?
There are none.
Okay. Board comments and questions regarding this presentation? Commissioner Courtney.
Hey, Commissioner Gavron, I'll save my EV questions for our stability matter, but Eric did want to know, usually we see on this list, a list of building and planning vehicles that are actually repurposed police patrol vehicles, and I see new police patrol vehicles, but no repurposing of older vehicles. What's the plan there?
So, because of the kind of the open question on whether or not we want to go forward with the repurposed vehicles for building and planning or purchasing electric vehicles, we haven't put that on this list. In terms of, my understanding from Mr. Multeria, and he can come tap me on the shoulder and kick me out if I'm wrong, is that the, I think we have about 11 police patrol vehicles which are on the list. We don't know, and it's really anyone's guess, when those will show up. They're probably not going to show up, probably until even the second half of next year. When we get those vehicles, they, some of them will absolutely be repurposed for, to replace our fleet pool or loner vehicles that we use township-wide for various things. Some of them, depending on the Board's policy decisions, could be used then in building and planning. Others might eventually head to auction, and some others might be kept as almost kind of a part stock because of all the issues driving with parts, and I'll let Paul talk.
If I can add, there are, you won't see some of the repurposed police vehicles here. Approximately six of the police vehicles, when they are taken out of service as patrol vehicles, are repurposed to be used within the police department. They are repainted, they are turned into surveillance vehicles and different items of that nature that we don't really discuss, but six of those vehicles are slated for that purpose, first and foremost, and usually they're the ones that are the best of condition. And then from there, as Eric has indicated, our normal process would then be our loner pool, because our supervisors within parks, within highway, and all, they share those vehicles, depending on demands. They don't all get one, it's shared. They're also used when other vehicles break down, so we do have like a rental car, and then, as indicated, we'd have the BNP, and also then there's the vehicles that do go to auction. Just a note on the windows, just so the Board has a better understanding, one of the reasons why we pursued this earlier is, the window for the 2021 ordering for the vehicles that were approved earlier this year in March, none have been ordered yet. The manufacturers have not opened the 2021 ordering window, so our hope is that when it opens, we can order the 2022 with it. We've been told by one manufacturer that there won't be a window, that we will be buying competitively against the general population. So, we're in an interesting time right now with how we're trying to keep fleet moving and staff able to do their tasks.
Great, thank you. I think it's, I think it's great that you're coming up with creative solutions for our global supply chain problem. One quick follow-up, the police vehicles that are used for surveillance, do they have the same specs and requirements as the patrol vehicles in terms of the need for upfitting?
Essentially, we take the police vehicles and we don't downgrade them. We may change, we may take the lights off, we may put some behind grille lights because those vehicles can be used for pursuit or whatever it may be. We alter appearance and stuff like that.
Okay, but my question is more on the requirements of those vehicles. Say there was no replacement available and you had to purchase a surveillance vehicle, is the requirement the same as for a patrol vehicle?
For the most part, yes, because they could be called on at any time to partake in a pursuit or any of that nature, or transport of prisoners and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Courtney, any other Board members? Commissioner Wellen.
Yes, just one quick question in two parts for you, Mr. McLehaney. Most of the vehicles are pretty self-explanatory, most of the prices are, however, there are two vehicles that are, you know, over $200,000 apiece, and I was just wondering if you could just give a quick explanation of what those two vehicles are and why that costs.
The first vehicle is your refuse-hooked loader truck. Essentially, if you've seen a dumpster truck that comes up and picks up dumpsters and moves them around, we currently have a truck like that that's utilized for moving debris, different operations throughout the township, we have dumpster containers. The truck is, if I remember correctly, Mr. Multeria will correct me, is early 2000s, it's 20-some years old. We're starting to have age issues with the truck, frame is rotting out from age and so forth. So, you know, that type of truck, that's within the normal range for a vehicle of that type. The other piece is a refuse dump truck. Essentially, we have a truck that's used by refuse for picking up specials and all that, it has a dump body on it, it's a specialized piece of equipment that we use. As you can see, we also have the plow equipment on that that adds a good bit of money so that they can be utilized as one of our pieces of equipment during snow emergencies. So these are larger than the pickup trucks that you would see driving around on the street, these are, you know, larger series vehicles.
Thank you.
So, just an example, I think our trash trucks start at about $180,000. So, a little different market than what you and I deal with in our everyday, going to, you know, Martin X or something.
Thankfully.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Wellen. Commissioner McKeon, and Commissioner Stevenson. Oh, you had your hand before, no?
Commissioner Stevenson.
Commissioner Stevenson.
Because I was not raising my hand the first time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is about the police cars, the, there's patrol cars and there's the supervisor's SUV vehicles. Is there clarification on why there is a need for a different type of vehicle for supervisors versus that?
My understanding and discussions with the police department, because we meet with them yearly, is to be able to do more of a larger mobile office along with the ability to move passengers. They also may bring other command staff with them to an emergency, and so you, the understanding is that the vehicles are multipurpose. They may do more than patrol when they come out with that vehicle, with an extra supervisor in it, or extra equipment and so forth. So they are slightly larger, but it's because of the capacity issues and the need in use.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevenson. Any other comments or questions regarding the list in general? One question I have, and I think I know the answer to this, are any of these vehicles electric vehicles or alternative fuel vehicles?
We went through each of the vehicles in full detail to see if we could find a replacement. We did find, we looked at all of them. The only vehicle that had a possibility was the parking services van, but then we started running into, first, there was an upcharge, but secondly, fitting it into the garage, it didn't fit, because it's, what you would see is what they call transit van, which is narrower and taller. We have an eight-foot height limitation, seven-foot, excuse me, so that's why I've got the right-hand man here. Seven-foot height limitation, and we couldn't get it into the garage. And I even suggest that they let the air out of the tires every night, and that didn't go over well.
All right, thank you very much.
Pete would like to add also.
There was, there was one more aspect to that whole build that wouldn't work. So, our current van is a four-passenger van, the E-Transit only comes with a two-passenger. Honestly, we looked into adding another seat, but since the batteries are in the floor, they, you can't, you can't drill into the floor, you can't mount anything on them, so that pretty much struck that out.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, I've heard no objections to this list, and I think, I think the Board, from what I'm seeing, is comfortable with this as a whole. Oh, Commissioner. Commissioner Churchill, thank you.
I apologize, I don't know if this is the time to discuss this, but when, like from 2010 onward, we were facing some economic distress, and that's why we did not fully fund our Equipment Fund. And this, the idea behind it is that we rent it to ourselves, and the money that we get back when we need replacements, we have it, we don't have to dip into our general fund. So my question is, is this budget proposal going forward, is it keeping the Equipment Fund at 50%, or should it be fully refunded because this is better times?
Commissioner Churchill, that is a good question, and it has a kind of a multi-part answer. First part is even since 2010, the, all the equipment that is funded through the Sewer Fund and the Solid Waste Fund, which are both enterprise funds, those have always stayed at 100% funded level. So, the 50% level that you refer to is in relation to the General Fund, which is mostly funding your police, your dump trucks, your parks and recreation, some of the other public works enterprises. The proposed 2022 budget does continue the 50% funding level. At this point, you know, the township has been able to still maintain that Equipment Fund. We have, we have been able to, and some of that due to Pete and his staff's good work, to elongate the useful life of certain pieces of equipment, that's something that we're always trying to do. But we also still have been replacing our equipment as we've gone along over the last 12 years, still at the 50% funded level. The impact has really been kind of a decline in overall in the level of the fund balance, for lack of a better term, in the Equipment Fund. That's not a major concern, because we still have more than adequate reserves for this year and for several additional years. It is something that I do speak with both Mr. McLehaney and Mr. Multeria on, on an annual basis, as we look at that fund and try to look out several years in terms of the funding that's necessary. I wouldn't be shy of coming back before the Board and asking for an increase into that percentage of 50% if at some point I feel like it's definitely necessary for the Equipment Fund.
So it's your opinion that funding at 50%, at least for next year, you feel comfortable for that, but if an outlying year, you wouldn't hesitate to suggest that we increase our contributions to the Equipment Fund? Is that fair?
That's accurate, and I'd even go a little bit further to where I would say, at least for multiple years, I'm not going to get into whether that's two years, four years, or six years, but I would say at least multiple more years, I think we can stay at the 50% funded level.
But there could be a time in the future, and we'll have to continue to monitor the fund as we've seen with cost increases and things of that nature. We will see increases to those vehicle rental rates, even if we stay at the 50% level, but it is something that we will continually monitor, and we'll report back out to the Board if we feel that something needs to be changed.
I know that's good news to Commissioner Zeloff. I, maybe not this year, but next year, I think that we should address increasing the money to our Equipment Fund. I'm just poking with you, Scott, I know.
Thank you, Commissioner Churchill.
Any other comments? President Bernheim.
Yeah, just one very quickly on that, because Commissioner Churchill raises a point. I think Commissioner Churchill, Commissioner Zeloff, and I are the only ones left when that decision was made, and the fact of the matter is, we have, the Equipment Fund is unique, not many municipalities do that, and it's a matter for planning and budgeting process. Many or most municipalities just pay directly out of the General Fund, and so we have set up a separate Equipment Fund in order to, you know, properly budget for this, and I guess it was about 10 years ago where we had dropped that down from 50% to 50% of what its prior levels have been, and nevertheless have been able to go forward. And the question will be at some point, Commissioner Churchill is correct, as to whether the financial situation, our use of vehicles, would require us to say, all right, for planning purposes, we would, you know, increase the amount that's in that fund. But we're not shortchanging ourselves, it's just a matter of budgeting and taking it from one bucket and holding it in another.
Thank you, President Bernheim. Any other comments on this part? Okay, as promised, we're going to bifurcate this part of the discussion and... and move on to a topic I mentioned and Commissioner Courtney touched on, which is the police vehicles being converted to kind of our light-duty vehicles for building and planning versus purchasing new vehicles. The last time we had this discussion, we held off on making a decision, awaiting the hiring of a sustainability manager. We have since done so and done a wonderful job with that, with the, with the hiring choice. We, we received a detailed memo from our sustainability manager and wanted to have, before we got into Commissioner comments and questions, would love to have her make a few comments and summarize the memo a little bit for us tonight.
So, I just prepared a brief presentation to go through the highlights of the memo. Just to recap, I was asked to evaluate the costs and environmental impacts associated with retrofitting police vehicles, owning and operating them for a number of years, and then comparing that to a handful of alternative vehicles used for the same purpose. The vehicles that I evaluated were a 2016 Ford Explorer and a 2016 Dodge 1500 pickup, which are in our, currently in our fleet. I'm only evaluating non-emergency, non-emergency light-duty passenger vehicles. And then I have a number of alternative vehicles that are either battery-electric vehicles, which run purely on battery power, and plug-in hybrid electric vehicles, which can operate on battery for 20 to 40 miles of range before they need to be plugged in. If they're not plugged in, they revert to gas power. So, just a little explanation about how I evaluated the costs. In, I assumed that year one was the year that we retro, either retrofit the first police vehicle or purchase a new electric vehicle. Subsequent years, we're just paying for maintenance and gas or fuel. And then around year four and year seven, we would be replacing the retrofit police vehicle with another retrofit police vehicle, selling the one that we have at auction. And just kind of, that's kind of how I did the accounting, just to give you a little background. Since the memo came out, I've gotten a lot of questions about the social cost of carbon, which wasn't originally in my numbers. But because this came up so much, I wanted to address it here. The social cost of carbon is a topic that many misunderstand. What it really is meant to evaluate is what the future economic costs are of emitting greenhouse gases. There is a current number on that set by the Biden administration of $51 a ton. There, there is some disagreement over what that value really is, but that's the number that I used. There is also potential that carbon taxing becomes a reality, in which case that number will be an actual cost of ownership. But in the meanwhile, it can just be considered as a future cost that we will be undertaking by emitting that carbon. So, in my numbers moving forward, I did factor that in. I also factored in the possibility of receiving grant funding. The alternative fuels incentive grant is the most common and likely that we would receive. It covers up to $7,500 of the cost differential, and it does not apply to plug-in hybrid vehicles. So, for this evaluation, vehicles number three and number six would not receive that grant funding. And so, you'll, you'll see that that creates quite a difference in the cost. So, the gist of it is the study vehicles, the Ford Explorer and the Dodge 1500, coming in around $7,000, $8,000 after nine years of ownership. The Toyota RAV4 Prime plug-in hybrid, which is the only vehicle on this list that does have all-wheel drive, which is a requirement for some departments, that, oh, I'm sorry, that, that came in at 20, around a little over $26,000. And then you kind of have everything in between. The Chevy Bolt is in there. It's the lowest cost, but it's also the least likely to be applicable to township's needs. So, I would just ask you to consider that. We're probably, most likely, you know, would be looking at numbers three through six for likely alternative vehicles. So, this, these graphs just show what some of those price differences are. On the left, you kind of see that over time, the alternative vehicles get closer and closer to cost parity with the ICE vehicles. That's to be expected because there is a higher cost of fuel and maintenance with ICE vehicles. However, because this study evaluated vehicles that only drive 3,500 miles a year, that's why you're not seeing the huge cost savings that you would if you were evaluating a vehicle that drove more miles. However, on the right-hand side, in the blue, you can see the greenhouse gas emissions that are expected to be released by using each of the vehicles over the course of nine years. And it's obvious that the alternative vehicles result in a much lower greenhouse gas impact, although they do also have a higher cost. So, just to put things in perspective, this table shows the actual cost difference of each vehicle compared to the one study vehicle, the Ford Explorer. So, you can see you're paying for the RAV4, you'd be spending 17, almost $18,000 extra to purchase that vehicle and use it over nine years. With the Chevy Bolt, you're looking around $2,000, and then, like I said, you have everything in between. The greenhouse gas emissions reduced are between 11.8 and 13.4 tons of CO2 equivalent over the course of nine years. And then just to put that in perspective, that would be the equivalent of about 222 trees that are planted as seedlings and grown and maintained for 10 years. I think we all know by now that that's not an easy task in the township. Or, you know, having and maintaining 16.4 acres of forests, electrifying 2.4 homes, or replacing 508 incandescent lamps with LEDs. This table just attempts to put things in terms, again, of dollars and cents. If you were to look at how much you're spending to reduce one ton of greenhouse gas emissions, that's your column on the, that's your second column. The right column, similar approach, and this, this is all the concept of green premium, of what, you know, what you're paying extra to, to reduce your emissions. So, on the right, you're saying for every $1,000 that you spend, you are reducing your emissions by this amount. And then on the right, you know, I'm just showing for, this is what one ton of greenhouse gases is. So, I hope that makes sense. If not, I can revisit that. And then just a reminder of the resolution the township passed to transition our vehicle fleet by 2045. And in the memo, I just state that, that does seem really far away, but most of our fleet, about 70% of our fleet, isn't even in consideration to be transitioned anytime in the near future due to the technical needs of those vehicles. So, we only have about 30% of our fleet is passenger vehicles. Of those, the large majority of them are police and fire vehicles, which we are not evaluating for EVs at this time, again, due to technical and cost constraints. So, if you were to work backwards from 2045, that has you starting to look at your refuse and heavy maintenance equipment around 2035, your heavy-duty pickups optimistically around 2028, your police and fire, again, optimistically 2025. So, that really only gives us about three years to start transitioning what we can before we start getting into those. And as I mentioned in my memo, you know, if, if we get our first police EV in 2025, the soonest that we would be then rolling it down would be about 2028 or later. And that's a lot of greenhouse gas emissions that would be released in the meanwhile. So, with that, I would ask the commissioners to evaluate the green premiums that I mentioned in previous slide, and I can go back to that. Consider what each of you on behalf of your constituents would be comfortable with paying to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, in essence. And then in 2022, making a commitment to procure green vehicles whenever possible. Perform a fleet and charging suitability analysis to better refine which vehicles can be transitioned in the next five years. The best place is to put charging stations and things like that. If, if there is an opportunity to purchase vehicles, I know there aren't any on the list currently that can be EVs, but if that's being revisited, I think that we could reasonably purchase three EVs. And then, of course, installing charging stations to support, support that. And then looking forward to 2023, it's conceivable that we could purchase seven more EVs, install more charging stations. And then what's really going to have, I think, what's really going to set, tip the scales, I would say, is as soon as the police and fire vehicles can be transitioned to EVs, that's where we're going to see the highest cost savings and the highest emission savings. And that's where we'll most likely be realizing an actual return on investment as opposed to paying green premiums.
Great. Thank you so much for the presentation. Appreciate it. Before we open it up for comments and questions, I do have a question for our Director of Public Works. Because Paul, I want to make you come all the way back up. And I just want to set the, set the scope. So, we, we need to decide, if I'm correct, whether we're going to, as a policy for this board, transition from the police vehicles or purchase new electric vehicles? Is it all or nothing? Is it, you know, can we make a choice on doing one, doing a portion of it? What do we, what do we need to decide on tonight?
You could decide on nothing this evening. Or you could decide and tell, you know, direct staff that, that policy is not the question, that you wish to purchase EV vehicles based on a choice. And you could go with one, you could go with two, you could go with all five. Understanding that if you make a decision and you go with one or two, that over the course of time, the vehicles that are in service right now for the Building and Planning Department that are not being replaced, there may be a need, I was told I need to speak up. So, I'm trying. I don't like to yell.
But you need to.
But I need to. But the, the board needs to have the understanding that those vehicles that are not replaced with an EV vehicle and continue to be used by Building and Planning, that if there is a significant issue with that vehicle for repairs, where it's not really cost-effective to repair that vehicle, we will remove that from use. Depending on where we are in supply chain, it may go into our parts department, or it may go to auction. And what we'll do is take one of the loaner cars that I mentioned earlier that are utilized by all of township staff as needed, and that would then be put in its place, and we would then use that as that vehicle. So, we may incur a cost of downfitting some decommissioned police vehicles. So, that 2,400, pulling from memory, that roughly $2,400 number to decommission, we may have some of those until the fleet's completely transitioned out.
But if we choose not to purchase new electric vehicles or alternative fuel vehicles, and we choose instead to continue the process of every three years, we can do that as well, right? That's an option.
You can. You can. We can continue the way we are.
Okay.
That would be a decision of the board.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Again, before I get into Commissioner comments, I want to see if there's any public comment on, on this topic at all. Seeing none? Anything online? No? Okay. Oh.
Is it too late or?
Yes. Sorry, we're moving now. Of course.
So, I mean, my only, I wouldn't say concern, but I need to know is, let's say you were to decide, yes, we're going to do five or one or whatever.
Can you speak up also, please?
How about now? You hear me? So, the only thing I would really need to know is, let's say you guys decide to do one or five, whatever you decide on tonight. I couldn't stand here and physically tell you that I could support or make sure that they're operationally feasible, that they're going to do the job. I need to do the homework behind it. Anytime we purchase any kind of equipment, we meet with these departments. We discuss these for weeks on end, sometimes longer, to make sure that it's going to work. Just something to throw out there, how are you going to charge these things? You got to figure all that out. You have to install the infrastructure. I would say, my recommendation would be, do a little bit more homework on it and come up with a more solid plan before you absolutely decide if you're going to do one or five or anything like that.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner comment. Commissioner O'Neil.
Oh, thank you. I probably have a question for Pete, I think, in light of his last comment. Thank you for the presentation, Paloma, and I, great information. The question I have really has to do with indirect cost of ownership or leasing. How, what would be the plan for maintenance? Do we know what kind of, what sort of maintenance issues there are with EV or hybrids? What's the learning curve there, et cetera?
So, that goes back to what I was saying. Again, we would have to do the homework and prepare for it. Honestly, at first, we'd probably just send everything out for repairs.
Okay.
But it's a whole nother world. It's a whole nother world of certifications. You need to know what you're doing. You need to know what you can touch, can't touch. An average, and I'm.
Pete, I'm sorry, but you're going to have to speak up because I can't hear you. It's okay with me.
Can I?
Can they take out the masks?
So. Some of the homework I've been doing is how to train the mechanics and get them ready for this.
Yeah.
On average, it's between 25 and three grand per mechanic, just for a starter class. This isn't recertifications or anything like that. Some of these cars, and you need, you need to be a certified electrician before you can even dive into it. There's a lot of information that goes into it. Another simple thing or something I didn't think about, it, Paul came up with it. How do you lift these vehicles? The batteries are in the bed or in the floor of these vehicles. You can't lift these with a simple floor jack or a regular car lift that we have. It's a specific lift that's designed to lift these vehicles. So, it doesn't, if something goes wrong, you don't short out or cause a fire or anything like that. There's a whole quarantine area for the shop. There's a lot that goes into it. That's why I'd refer back to what I was saying earlier. We would need to lay out a solid plan and have it ready to go because they're going to break down. Something's going to happen. Just look at all the stories you hear.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner O'Neil. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Courtney.
Thank you. First off, this is my fourth year at this particular meeting, and this is the first year I haven't had to ask for the whys and the hows of EVs. So, thank you to our township manager for hiring a great sustainability director, and thank you, Paloma, for this excellent report. On the social cost of carbon, if it does end up being four to eight X higher than the $50, I wonder if you could bring back up the chart so we might actually see a comparison of how soon the cost differential would shift if the social cost of carbon actually is significantly higher than what the Biden administration is currently saying?
So, this one?
That one or the, or the graph, you know, the lines starting to converge after, yeah. I mean, I'm asking you to do math on the fly, which is a horrible thing for me to do.
Move the mic. Move the, you're blocking.
The mic's not going to help them. All right. You guys have to look at my face. So, yeah, I've just, I guess.
Much better.
Is it, is it safe to, so. Is it safe to, so if we look at this graph on the left here, you're looking at a convergence of costs around, let's say, year 10, year 11. I'm horrible at math on the fly as well. If the social cost of carbon is significantly higher, are we looking at, I assume we're looking at a closer convergence? And can you say what year that would occur?
I couldn't tell you what year. I mean, what you would want to know is, so say here, we're at about 25 tons. So multiply that by 200, and that's your, can someone do that math for me? I know that should be easy, but. And then, that's your new social cost for the, over the course of nine years.
Okay.
And then, versus the 10 times 200.
All right. I should have asked this earlier and figured it out sooner, but I think my point is clear that what the ballpark number we're using is like the lowest estimate at the moment. Some people are estimating it's eight times higher. So you can see that these numbers are very conservative. But our cost differential could be significantly different when you calculate the cost of the emissions we're putting into the year. Paloma, one more question for you. Why did you choose three as opposed to all five EVs for, was it, for-
Oh.
As your recommendation?
So, really quickly, this is the list of non-police passenger vehicles. Most of them are, some of these are less than five years old. I wouldn't completely rule them out, but they wouldn't be my first pick for ones to replace.
Paloma, can you speak up, please?
Yes, sorry.
Look, everybody, if you have your mask on, it's hard for everybody out there to hear. It's hard for us to hear.
It's also safer for the community for us to keep our masks on.
And so, we also need to conduct a meeting that's productive.
Hold on, we're not going to do this. You know, if you're comfortable taking it off, you're far enough away from everybody. Otherwise, we'll just ask you to speak up.
That's fine.
If you're uncomfortable about it, you can move down some. But this is what happens in courtrooms as well. The speaker does take off their mask. But Paloma, whatever you're comfortable in doing, please proceed.
Sure. And just let me know if I need to speak, just let me know if I need to speak up for that. Okay. So, a lot of the vehicles are pretty new. They're not the first ones I would pick to replace at this point. It's not outside of the realm of possibility, but if I'm narrowing it down, I wouldn't choose those. A lot of them drive really few miles, like less than 1,500 a year. So that convergence have, you just will, are so far away from parity in cost there, it doesn't make sense. A lot of them are not technically feasible. They either have to be pickup trucks, or they have to have, they have to have capabilities that are just not currently available in the marketplace for EVs. So that leaves you with three obvious, well, somewhat obvious choices. And then, those are the ones that are gray and in orange text. And then, the remaining ones could be considered, but again, have pretty low, either pretty low mileage or still pretty new. And because we're still kind of dipping our toe into the water on this, we still have to figure out charging. I would err on the side of fewer in our first year as opposed to more, and in starting with the most high-impact vehicles.
Great, thank you. I'll just wrap up with a couple of comments. I'm sure it comes as no surprise to anyone on this board that I would advocate that we replace as many electric vehicles as is feasibly possible, whether that's three, five, or however many. I think our policy from this point forward should be to stop buying internal combustion engines if there is an alternative available to us. When it comes to how are we going to charge them, I would remind everybody that we do already have money allocated in our CIP for the sustainability infrastructure projects that have been somewhat earmarked for charging infrastructure. And I think that's something that we saw in one of Paloma's slides, is an activity that we should engage in next year, and I would agree with that. And then, to Pete and Paul, I am no expert in cars. I open the hood and walk away and point to someone else, can you fix that? And that would certainly hold true with electric vehicles. But I know, I trust your expertise, and I trust your ability to get up to speed on these new vehicles and to create a plan, you know, certainly within six months as to how we can do this. It sounds like we're not going to be purchasing new vehicles until the latter half of next year in any course. And if we are going to move on the timeline that Paloma has proposed to hit our carbon neutrality goals, now is the time to solve this problem. Now is the time to invest, not just in purchasing new vehicles, not just in purchasing the chargers, but in purchasing the equipment and the training that we would need to maintain a non-combustion engine fleet. It has its costs associated, but we have, as I've said, already planned for this. We have a significant general fund balance and cash on hand that we can use for sustainability improvement and for sustainability infrastructure. And I see no reason why we would delay at this point, moving forward, with vehicles that would reduce our greenhouse gas emissions and help us hit our carbon neutrality goal that we all agreed to earlier this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Courtney, Commissioner Kramer.
Really quick, I would be remiss not to say that this list is just an idea of what could be transitioned. And I would obviously still have to work with Public Works to make sure that that's possible.
Can you repeat the last sentence?
Is that this is just an idea of which vehicles could be possible for replacement? But, you know, Public Works would still have to sign off on that, you know, and if it's actually possible. So I don't know if you guys want to talk about that now, or. I just want to make it clear that this was just an idea of vehicles that could be transitioned.
You're saying it's an idea, but Public Works has not signed on?
We haven't discussed it. Like, I haven't discussed this list with Public Works yet, so.
You haven't discussed it with them?
No.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kramer.
Paloma, thank you for your work. I have one question. These vehicles, if, the electric vehicles would all be under warranty initially, wouldn't they?
That's, I think, a Pete question.
Maybe that's for you, Pete. They would be under warranty initially, wouldn't they?
Yes, depending on what it is, yes.
Okay.
You're always going to have your tires and brakes, things of that nature. But any component or electrical component would be on the warranty.
So you would have probably a few years to get staff up to speed on maintaining the vehicles while they were under warranty?
So, all right, so Paul brought up a good point. A lot of times municipal vehicles, depending on the purpose, a lot of the warranties might be altered. I'll give you an example on a police utility vehicle, the patrol vehicles. Yeah, the power chain might be warranted, three years or 36,000 miles. But once we hack up the inside of this car, nothing else is. Things of that nature could affect it.
But if we're talking about passenger vehicles right now for use by public, by building and planning or, you know, other departments, they wouldn't have to be hacked up and altered like police vehicles, would they?
You would have some, but not as, nowhere near as drastic.
Okay.
Then, if I could just comment, my only comment to Pete was, we find that the warranties are different for municipalities on some of the vehicles. And we don't know at this time if the same warranty that you would receive as a private consumer is the same as we would receive. Because when we buy pickups and stuff of that nature that we're not altering other than, you know, we may be putting lights on it and so forth, the warranty on the power trains and all differ because they look at it as a commercial vehicle. So we don't have any information on that at this time. So, yes, we would assume that certain parts of it are under warranty, but I don't know if the warranty is as generous as what we would receive as private consumers if we bought the same vehicle. Just a word of information that we need to get, so we have a better understanding.
I would just like to make my comments at this point. I agree completely with Commissioner Courtney. Three years ago, I spoke with my predecessor, former Commissioner McGuire, about the need for us to start transitioning to electric vehicles. And it was shortly after that that this board sent to the EAC, gave to the EAC a mandate to look into the issue of creating electric vehicle infrastructure and transitioning. This is, that was almost, that was at least two and a half years ago, probably closer to three years now. And that's been three years that each time this issue has come up, there's been some delay or some reason not to do it. Initially, the reasons were, we don't have money in the budget for infrastructure. And so, we can't purchase any vehicles because we don't have money in the budget for charging infrastructure. So we put, a year ago, we put $100,000 into the CIP with the idea that this year, we could start installing the necessary infrastructure to begin to transition our fleet. That still hasn't happened. After three years, it's enough time. It's enough time to do the planning. It's enough time to figure out how we can do this. There have been multiple recommendations from the EAC, multiple grant opportunities for electric vehicle infrastructure, charging infrastructure that we haven't applied for. And it's just time that we do it. We have to do it. We don't have any choice. It's one of the most important things that we can do to keep the world from deteriorating due to climate change.
Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. Commissioner Sinai.
Thank you, Vice President Gabbard. So, thank you as well, Paloma and everyone. I think, you know, we're all excited to be, I'm thrilled to be having this discussion. You know, I, you know, it's a happy day when I hear us using the word "social cost of carbon." That is, warms my geeky heart, I know. But it's important, right? Because we have impact on the environment, and it's not just the stuff that shows up on our ledger. It's the impact we have around us. So, Paloma, I apologize. I should have looked at these more carefully before the meeting, and I didn't, so I put you on the spot. Can you put table one up?
I assume, you mean this one?
Okay, so, okay, so this is fine, this is fine. So when we're looking at this one, just so I understand, you're anticipating selling the electric cars in this table in year nine?
Uh, yes.
And so, we're selling them for like 4,400?
Um, for, selling them for, I just assumed that they would sell at auction for the same amount that our current vehicles sell.
Okay.
I don't have evidence to the-
So in the spirit of this table, I would probably think about it a little differently, right? So we currently hold these cars for three years, right? And then, we kind of move them out and replace them with a new retrofitted car. So if we do a three-year to three-year comparison, probably how we should do it, right? So, hold the new car for the same amount of time that we would hold the used car that we're getting from the police department. We would pay, you know, $34,000 for that RAV4. And then, it would cost us a little bit of money in years two and three. And then, we would sell it at the end of year three for the value then, right? And that would kind of match apples to apples. That's a time we would be getting rid of the other car anyway. Right? So there, you actually have data on what the secondary market is of a three-year-old hybrid RAV4 is. It's about, you know, thirty-some odd thousand dollars. So I'm thinking that the total cost of ownership there, you know, is looking something like in this table, if we were to do that line, something like, you know, was that $5,000? And I guess you would sell the Ford Explorer for, what, it's like 5,000, get an auction?
Yes.
Okay, so that would net out to be, you know, on the order of it would cost you a couple thousand dollars over a three-year holding period. Right? So it's sort of like a $3,000 to $4,000 delta over that holding period. It's not $26,000 over nine years. After three years, we would get a new electric car. We'd sell the old one at auction, right? And we would get whatever the current thing is, and probably the prices would converge by that point. I think the difference in the total cost of ownership is actually much tighter than what you have here. And I think it's important, right? Because we're not going to ignore budget when we do these things. But, you know, it is suggesting to me that we are much closer to prime time on these things just being fiscally responsible, you know. And then, once you start taking Commissioner Courtney's point about the social cost of carbon being a lower bound at 50 is probably higher than that. Like socially, we're probably netting out pretty close. So that was my question, really. So I understand this now, thank you. And I think with Commissioner Kramer's point about the warranty, which I had not thought of, the maintenance difference between these two might be somewhat different. And that's not embedded in these numbers. There is a value to that warranty. So I guess I'll make an observation at this point, which is, you know, I'm in favor of getting started. I'm not sure how many cars to do at once because, again, I take Public Works' point, which is, we don't quite know how it works in the fleet. And we don't necessarily want to jump off the cliff with no parachute, right? We, like, we want some backstop. But I will observe, you know, folks, like, at some point, we're going to have to make a transition. And whenever that is, we're going to say, we don't know how to do it yet, right? So at some point, we have to decide, we're going to start learning how to deal with these cars, and we're going to start developing the infrastructure. Because it's either this year, or it's next year, or the year after. But whenever we start actually transitioning to electric, we're going to be facing this decision. And I would rather start, you know, piloting some of these things now, get some experience with them, figuring out where they work, where they don't, when we have the luxury of doing that and having some other vehicles in the fleet. Because I think it's useful for us to learn how to use them and figure out what it's going to take to support them. I think the second observation I have is that, you, I've had the good fortune of spending a bunch of time with you, with Pete, with Paul, you know, Tiffany and Scott and others, talking about electric lawn mowers and leaf blowers and all those things. And I've come to appreciate something, which is that, you know, these things aren't necessarily good in the same ways that the gas power, the fossil fuel ones are. But they are good in other dimensions and less good in some, right? So they fit some things well and other things less well. And I have the feeling in the Township that we say, here's what we have, here's what we use our equipment for. Is there an electric replacement that we can just drop in? And I think if we're ambitious about trying to get to more electric, then hopefully, we start thinking about, well, can we modify how we do things slightly in some dimensions to make what we do fit the vehicles that work or the equipment that works and not try and make the equipment fit what we do? Anyway, and maybe we could get somewhere in the margin that way. So I've gone on too long, thank you. Paloma, this is terrific, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Sinai. I'm actually going to make a couple of comments now, and then Commissioner Whalen, you're next. When I read this memo, and I read this in depth, and Paloma, we spoke about it, to me, I came to a very different conclusion than Commissioner Courtney. And I said, this memo, to me, tells me we should continue converting. We should not buy electric vehicles at this time. We, if I look at that graph about the lines converging, I think Commissioner Courtney was looking at that bottom line, and they're getting very close. But that was for the Chevy Bolt, which Paloma had said really isn't apples to apples. We're looking at the RAV4, which is that top line. And after nine years, you're looking at an $18,000 difference to save 12 tons of greenhouse gases. So as you presented, we're talking $1,500 to reduce one ton of greenhouse gas. Now, whether the social cost of carbon is $51 a ton or whether it's eight times that at $400 a ton, we're still eight times, or I'm sorry, we're still four times that high estimate. And going beyond the economics and into what's rational, it just doesn't make sense. Now, with that said, when a professor of economics from Wharton starts talking about cost of ownership, I listen. And I think there's a lot to be said for, you know, should we be looking at it as three years versus three years, or three years versus nine years? And I think Commissioner Sinai makes some really good points and gets to, I think, a lot of what we heard earlier, which is, maybe it makes sense to pilot one of these and see what it is. And do we purchase one and then look at selling it after three years? Or look at selling it after five years? Or look at selling it after nine years? Or run it into the ground after, hopefully, 20 years? To me, you know, that, hearing what I've heard so far, that makes sense to me. I wouldn't transition all the way. I don't think that makes sense. Paloma, in your memo, you talked about if we have one, could whoever's using it bring it home at night? We don't need to, you know, if we have one electric vehicle in our fleet, building an entire infrastructure around one vehicle doesn't seem to make sense for me. If I recall the discussion we had about the Sustainability Fund within the CIP, it was not earmarked for anything. It was, there was discussion over whether it should be used for electric vehicle charging, but we never had a discussion over that's what it should be for. I think we should use it for whatever makes sense. And we have our EAC doing a sustainability- plan, and I know, Paloma, you're working with them on that. And I'm grateful that we have money, and I'm excited for taking on initiatives that can make a difference. But we don't know enough. I mean, these vehicles, as you've said, you know, maybe going 1,500 miles a year, or 3,000 miles a year, they're not having a major impact. They're certainly having some impact, but, you know, I wouldn't go whole hog and say, yes, let's do it, because it just, sadly, it's not there. And to Commissioner Kramer's points of, we've waited and waited, the problem is, we've waited because the technology's not there. We don't have an electric fleet, because there aren't electric dump trucks, and there aren't electric garbage trucks, and there aren't electric vehicles, other than light passenger vehicles, that work for us. And that's not what our fleet is. So, I think, you know, we, as a township, have taken sustainability very seriously. I think every single member of this board believes in it, and believes how important it is, and wants to do the right thing, and get us to a more sustainable township. Unfortunately, we are a little bit ahead of the technology, and I think it would be not fiscally responsible for us to, or responsible at all, forget fiscally responsible, it would not be responsible for us at all to, at this point, go whole hog and convert everything. But at the same time, with what I heard, if we do pilot it, I certainly would be supportive of that. So, those are my thoughts on it right now. Commissioner Whelan?
Thank you, Vice President Gavron. Not to belabor the point, because I know the night is getting long, I would fully support Commissioners Courtney, Sinai, and Kramer. Vice President Gavron, I'm glad that you're coming over to the other side. I think, if not now, then when, there's never going to be a perfect time. I think that, you know, between Paloma, Pete, and Paul, we have an amazing staff who's more than capable of ambitiously looking at this and creatively getting us what we need. And it is sort of a pilot program. I'm not suggesting 100% wholesale changeover. I'd like to rely on staff to tell me, is the number two, is three, is it four? I'll rely on you guys, I'm not going to even suggest what the number is. But I do think that this needs to be done, and done now. And, you know, that's why we hired Paloma, that's, you know, this is what we need to be moving forward, and this is the direction of the township. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Whelan. Commissioner McCollum.
Thank you, Commissioner Gavron. I come out to the same place as Commissioner Gavron is, which is, I think we need to jump into the pool. I think if you're going to learn to swim, you have to get wet. I think we need to start out, but I agree, we're dependent upon the automotive industry to advance the technology, and as you point out, EVs are not at the place where they can be used for emergency vehicles. They just don't have that reliability. So, I think we need to get started. One of the things, just a slight suggestion, is that the technology, there are lots of vehicles out there in passenger use, there's that Ford Mustang that gets great reviews, it may not be something you think of, but Ford non-emergency use, that would be a possibility. So, I think we want to make sure that we're covering all the bases in terms of what's available out there without thinking, gee, you know, BNP shouldn't be driving around in a hot Mustang. Maybe that's the perfect vehicle for them, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McCollum. Commissioner Grimes?
Yeah, thank you. So, when you're towards the end here, you tend to repeat what other people have said. But I'm going to come down on the view that, I do believe it's important that we show leadership here. And when I say show leadership, it's that we get, we take it, we start experimenting with this. At the other hand, on the other hand, I think that should be done at reasonable cost and at reasonable risk, because we are a government, we are not a private corporation, and we use taxpayer money. And what I am, what I think we should do is start slow and get it, get our feet wet with this, with a few vehicles, I think Vice President Gavron suggested, and see where we go. My concern is that what we've heard, there's a lot of uncertain, there's significant uncertainty here. And what I wouldn't want to see is, we dive in too fast with this, and the vehicles have issues, they have high costs, and now, we can't provide the services that residents expect us to provide, because either the vehicles are out of service, they're not suitable for what we think they're suitable for, or we're paying high costs. And, you know, I'm not suggesting this, but last year, I mentioned, when we had this conversation, you know, if technology isn't ready, but we want to make a contribution to the environment, it might be more cost-effective to purchase carbon offsets if we want to make a contribution to the environment. And I say, I'm not suggesting that, but it's some of the costs we've seen in the chart for the electric vehicles, it would be more fuel efficient, I mean, more cost-efficient. So, what I'm suggesting is, I agree, there's never a perfect time. I think Commissioner Sinai said this, you're absolutely right, though you, of course, said it much better than I did, or would. But, you know, never a great time to do this. Let's start, let's see how it goes, revisit this next year, but make sure that it's got reasonable cost while we try and do what's right. So, thank you.
Commissioner McKeon.
Thank you. You know, we've heard this for years, we're not there yet, we're not there yet. I believe we're not there yet, but I absolutely believe we're at a point now where we need to have some kind of a pilot program. We need to dive in, even if it's just one vehicle, whether it's one, two, or three. And I'll just close by saying, you know, we've seen all these things about numbers here, here's cost of carbon, here's cost of, and value. And I think there's significant value that you learn, you know, from the knowledge you get of trying this program. So, I think the pilot program will be worth it in a lot of ways, in terms of the economic savings and hopefully the knowledge we get. So, I'd really like to see some kind of tangible steps towards a pilot program.
Thank you, Commissioner McKeon. Commissioner Zella.
Thank you, Vice President Gavron. So, I think before the commissioners had extensive and frequent discussions on electric vehicles, the police department purchased three. And I applaud that initiative, which is an example of our staff having great interest in electric vehicles for some time. We haven't had a recent report, but the last we knew is, there were great difficulties with those three. They were not able to meet the needs of the police department when they were here, and a lot of times, they weren't here because they had to go back to where they were made because they weren't performing. And so, we've been at this a while, that is true. The market is, we're ready, the market and the technology are not. So, we've also been at this a while in terms of our time. This is our third meeting in calendar year 21, talking about five vehicles, police vehicles to retrofit. But I think Vice President Gavron nailed it. If we can begin to pilot with one, I think that's something that makes sense. It doesn't, you can't justify it with the additional cost, right? It's an additional $18,000, but it is time to get started with a pilot of one. I don't understand three, Paloma, I don't think you justified that, but I think three, I think one does make sense. Because we have to look at the data, and we have to have, because you and I have had this conversation, support what we do with data and not with headlines, right? And so, and I have great confidence in Pete, and Paul, and our Public Works staff, because they've been saying they want to move in this direction, and they've been doing a lot of work, and we now have an in-house consultant who can aid in that process. And so, I want to say thanks to Pete for keeping our existing fleet going in the face of supply shortages and, you know, the inability to even purchase new ICE vehicles, internal combustion engine, that's a very good acronym. So, but it's a premium of $18,000 per vehicle. I think that that's what we learned from Public Works six months ago, that's been confirmed today. Just a few more notes that I have. We, you know, I think Commissioner or Vice President Gavron's analysis was spot on, because maybe the social cost of carbon's 50, maybe it's 400, but it still can't be justified with the numbers. And our goal, which we all agreed to, of the, an EV fleet 23 years from now, in 2045, that's, you know, a lot of time before we get there, but I understand there's work to be done before we get there. But the delays that we've encountered are not because of the budget, that's never been set, it's because of technology and because of our needs. And I haven't seen any EAC recommendations. There's been rumors about them, but they haven't been presented to us, meaning the entire board. So, I think, let's not discuss this any further, let's have one vehicle, and then, have the other four be RPVs, police, retrofitting police vehicles. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Commissioner Zella. President, Pete, sorry.
Commissioner, I just want to make one, a couple of comments, actually. So, yes, we have three hybrid vehicles, they're not fully electric. So, we have two hybrid patrol vehicles that the police do utilize daily when they can. Yes, you're correct, they've been problematic. One actually just got towed today, the other one has a check engine light and sitting in the backyard right now. The third one is a four-door sedan. So, the hybrid sedan, no one offers one that's police-capable or emergency-capable anymore. It's been working for us, but you have to keep one thing in mind, this isn't a fully functional police vehicle. It's a, we call it a ghost car, so it might have like the light lettering on it, it still has lights, but it doesn't have all the equipment in it. Reason being, there's just no room. The number one complaint we're getting with this vehicle is that the police officers just can't fit in it. It's just too tight, it's too small. But I just wanted to clarify that.
Great, thanks for that update. Any other comments? President Bernheim, I believe you had a comment?
Yes, this is one of those topics where, you know, we get to the point where everything that needs to be stated has been said, it's just that everyone hasn't said it. So, but I will be extraordinarily brief, because I think, Vice President Gavron, you've probably hit the nail on the head about this, but I just want to make sure that it's clear. There's never, the word delay bothers me, and it sends out, I think, the wrong connotation of what's actually occurred here. Nobody's delayed this. This board has been on the cutting edge of environmental concerns and sustainability for a long period of time, and I think at one point, we read off a whole list. And this is something that has been considered, you know, frequently. The stumbling block also has not been a commitment for finances, that's never been the issue or the concern. The question's been the technology, and will it then meet the needs? And, you know, one of the dangers of reading a lot about this, and Paloma, your memo was fantastic, absolutely, was great, but, you know, the more you read them someplace else, you get concerns. One of the problems is the batteries. And there are articles that are out there about the manufacturing of the batteries, and whether they actually contribute to the carbon footprint of what's going on and the problems that are there. Bill Gates got involved in electric vehicles, in what aspect of it? The manufacturing of batteries, saying industry needs to improve in that aspect of it. So, I think that we need to rely upon our experts, and it should be clear that the board, which sets policies, the policy says, let's do this as promptly and as efficiently as we can, we are all in, but we need you to give us the guidance of those specific details in that you have proven time and time again to us, and Paloma, your short tenure here have certainly, you know, stood out, even for those of us who questioned, do we really need that position, not you individually? You've proven, any one of us that were hesitant, oops, we were wrong then, and we are glad you are here now. So, we trust your judgment to lead us forward in doing this in a responsible fashion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Bernheim. And along those lines, Commissioner Churchill, did you have a comment?
I'm leaning more to Commissioner Grimes, Commissioner Gavron, Commissioner McCombe, but I appreciate that Commissioner, he, keep the fire under our feet, but I think that we're not there yet. I think everyone wants to be there. And I think a pilot program for non-emergency vehicles is appropriate, and I also believe that we should continue investing in our infrastructure towards that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Churchill.
So, from what I've heard, I think it's pretty apparent that this board wants to go ahead and pilot this idea. As we often do, or as we always do, we defer to our staff on how to best pilot it, what that looks like. So, when we come back, you know, we have another, almost a month until our budget is finalized for this year. So, if staff can come back with, what does this pilot program look like? That would be wonderful, and that's what we will ultimately move forward with, with piloting this, and with the rest of the, with the rest of that fleet continuing to convert from the police vehicles that we already have. Is that the direction that you guys need, hopefully? Yeah? Wonderful. Yeah. Since everyone's pointing at each other, I'll assume you all agree.
Rock, paper, scissors.
Great. Thank you very much for all the information on this. We will move on to the third item on our agenda, which is for staff to present further information to this board on the implications of raising all of our part-time staff employed by the township to a minimum of $15 an hour. And again, it looks like our CFO, Eric Traub, is going to summarize the detailed menu he provided to us. After his presentation, I'll ask for public comment, and again, Commissioner comment and questions. Again, as this is direction to provide staff for the budget, we'll conclude with kind of figuring out where, hopefully, it's just as clear as our last agenda item on what the direction we give to staff for our budget. CFO, Traub.
Thank you, Vice President Gavron. So, you have the issue briefing before you, we talked about this, was it in October? The months are blending together. I also do have our Parks and Recreation and Libraries directors here with me, as they're the departments that employ the most part-time people for any specific questions. So, what we've tried to do is get to that kind of bottom line, you ask staff to go back and say, all right, what if we did a change and had a minimum $15 per hour pay for part-time employees? Obviously, all of our full-time employees are well above that wage. So, we looked at these, I worked with each of the individual departments, we put numbers back and forth, we tried to come to an overall consensus in terms of where the numbers are. You see, I think the memo lays things out relatively well. In libraries, where the wages are, we haven't had any significant issues at all in terms of recruitment, retention, hiring, things of that nature. The library director was kind enough to provide me with some comparables in terms of salaries, you see that in there. The one thing I would point out is, the Haverford comparison isn't really quite apples to apples, because they have library assistants who have certain duties. Our library assistants make more than $15 an hour, but you see what's there. Parks and Recreation is a different issue. That's why Ms. Heller brought forward to this board at the Budget Workshop, the idea of having an across-the-board pay increase of $2 an hour, which is included in the proposed 2022 budget. So, what she provided is some pool staff wage comparisons, and also summer camp wage staff comparisons for you to review there. We also, as, I think one point was mentioned, tried to look at kind of the data of these part-time employees that we still currently have active in our payroll system in terms of where they live, provide you some information in terms of that. And then, you know, the bottom-line numbers in terms of overall impact on the finances, obviously, if you're going to raise the wages, it's going to raise the costs. Our estimate is roughly $352,000 is that estimate above what is in the proposed budget. Now, I believe everyone does have a single page, I'm looking at the Township Secretary, that was actually inadvertently not attached to the agenda, that was prepared, that kind of follows the information that we provided to you, I think it was back in October, on this issue. So, it shows you on the left-hand side, the proposed budget, and then also on the right-hand side, what would be quote-unquote "an amended budget" with the $15 an hour. You know, the actual wage difference, and if anyone from the public wants that, I believe Ms. Jennings over there has copies. The actual wage difference is about $320,000, but there's additional employee benefit costs, payroll costs, things of that nature. So, the other thing that, you know, we spoke with, or I spoke with Donna about is, you know, this doesn't only have an impact on what we pay people, it has an impact on what people would pay to use the pools or the programs and such. So, we tried to provide some comparisons on that front as well. So, overall, you know, I hope we've provided you with enough information to kind of discuss and deliberate this matter more. It's really a policy item for the board to debate. You know, if you need additional information, you can ask us for that. In terms of, if you wanted to make any change to the budget, per the information in here, that change would have to be made through a budget amendment, which those budget amendments have to occur at a Board of Commissioners meeting, not specifically at this Finance Committee meeting. committee meeting. You could recommend it, but then you'd have to vote on it. All amendments have to be done at a Board of Commissioners meeting. So, with that, I'll turn it back over and see if there's any questions or comments.
Great. Thank you, Eric. Before we get to Commissioner questions, we will start with a public comment. Seeing, if you would introduce yourself. The floor is yours.
Adrian.
Elter. Winwood. In Yiddish, there's a word, it's called, that's shanda. A shanda is an embarrassment. And the fact that the proposed 2022 budget does not include a $15 per hour minimum wage is a shanda. No one may, even making $15 can afford to live here. We in Lower Merion are supposed to be a beacon, an example for other townships and businesses here. And the fact that we are not doing this $15 minimum wage for every employee who works here is, I have no words. I just have no words.
Thank you, Ms. Elter. Any other public comment? I will ask the Township Secretary, any?
One, Virgil, Sean McMurtry. She's, I'm going to ask her.
Okay. There we are. Ms. McMurtry, if you'd introduce yourself and share a comment.
Hi, Sean McMurtry. I live in Marion Station, and I, what she said, Adrian Elter, go. Absolutely. How do you commute here and afford it? And if you live here, how could you afford it? And do we want to keep these employees? I think the answer is an absolutely resounding yes. And regarding emissions, I see lots of people making different choices. I used to just get in my car and go wherever I wanted to, but now I consolidate trips. Do I really have to drive somewhere? I have neighbors who walk everywhere. So, I wonder if, if, number one, are there municipalities out there that we are looking to as models for guidance, for converting? And number two, what alternatives are there if we don't feel we can start gaining advantages through municipal vehicles? What other alternatives are there? I personally...
Ms. McMurtry, if I, if I can interrupt, we're talking right now about the question of $15 minimum wage.
Okay.
Not about vehicles. We've already discussed that and decided on a...
I obviously missed my chance to comment. So, yes to the 15. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Yep, please come to the podium, introduce yourself and share a comment. Jody, do we want people, either podium, podium? Okay, great.
Good evening. I'm Isabel Melvin, Winwood, and I agree, we should have a $15 minimum wage for our employees. It's a competitive time, and that is the reason why. People cannot get employees. The private sector can't get employees. So, we need to motivate some people to work for us. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Melvin. Any other public comment? Okay, just now, Commissioner, comments, questions, both to public comment and on our CFO's presentation. Does anyone have any comments? Commissioner Kramer?
I actually have a question for Mr. Traub. I know that many jurisdictions have talked about staging a gradual increase to a minimum wa, a minimum wage of 15 over the space of a couple of years. What would be the cost? We know what the cost to raise it to $15 an hour would be. What would be the cost to raise it to, for example, 13 this year and then move in the next year or two up to 15?
So, Commissioner Kramer, she had posited this question to me late this afternoon. I worked with staff, the number, and I'm relatively confident, for $13 an hour for next year as a minimum, would be about $204,000. So, obviously, that, that's lower than the number that's in the issue briefing. In terms of the cost going forward, that's just something I didn't have any time to, like, cost out of, what would it be in 2023 with an extra? I mean, you can assume that if you're at 13 and then only going up to 15, that the costs, the annual additional cost would be lower. But what that is, I just didn't have any time to actually get to before the meeting tonight. But that was the, in working with Donna, talking with Mr. McElhaney, doing the calculations for libraries, that's what we came up for, for 13 an hour.
And I would like to make some comment. I think it is appropriate for this township to provide all of its employees with a living wage. And I would like to point out that raising the minimum wage to $15 an hour has been a high priority of our governor for Pennsylvania. We should be at the forefront of raising it appropriately, even where we can, even though we can't do it generally for employees within the township. We can at least set an example for the rest of our community by treating our employees with dignity and fairness.
Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. Commissioner Well and then Commissioner Grimes.
Thank you, Vice President Gavron. And not to belabor the point, because I think I do support what Commissioner Kramer said, but I will jump to the conclusion. I am fully supportive of increasing the township's minimum wage, and I would suggest, similar to what we just agreed to on the last agenda item, I will suggest that I don't, I mean, $15 an hour seems, you know, like a good number, but it feels a little picked out of the air to me. I think a number should be provided to us. I would like to rely, ask staff to basically say, "Hey, tell us what you would recommend as an appropriate increase." Would they recommend an appropriate staging? You know, I'm, I'm amenable to all of these, but for me to do this, you know, on my own, I feel a little bit out, out over the water. So, that's where I would leave it, is suggested that we leave it to staff to give us their expert opinions and come back to us.
Commissioner Grimes?
Yeah, thank you, Vice President Gavron. So, I wonder, I'm first going to start with a question, and I don't know, Donna, if this is for you or for Eric. If we were to move to $15 an hour, do we, do you believe that it would help us significantly in getting employees for this summer? As opposed to the $2 increase that's been proposed?
We haven't gotten many comments with regards to the pay rate for our recruitments. It's really just been a matter of interest. Lifeguard retention has been a larger issue, but with the $2 an hour increase, we believe that we will be faring well. Floating the idea of 15 compared to some of the other municipalities where they're proposed for 2022, that, I think, with the lifeguard rate at $11 an hour, with the proposed budget, we're very competitive with, with our recruitment at that pay rate. I can't speak to whether we would get more interest or more dedicated interest at $15 an hour. I just don't know that.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you. So, let me just make a quick comment. I mean, this, there is a significant, as others have said, a significant equity issue, which I believe in, but also the cost is somewhat concerning. For instance, looking at this, at the chart for summer camp, 2021, the fee for summer camp was $325. The projection is if we pay $15 an hour, the cost for a family, presumably one person in summer camp, is now $640, which is double. And I, I believe that is a, could be a significant burden for some of the people who send their kids to summer camp. And that, I think, is something that we need to consider also. So, you know, my sense of it is, is, it's suggested is maybe this is something we look at gradually. I think the $2 an hour recommended helps for these positions. I would also note that these are the kind of positions, at least, that have been discussed with us that tend not to be, I mean, I shouldn't label, but tend not to be heads of households or people in households, you know, junior counselors, and, you know, and gate attendants at the, at the swimming pools and that sort, and camp counselors. So, and not our full-time jobs. So, my suggestion would be that we do the $2 an hour that's been suggested and maybe leave it open to staff to make some more suggestions, but at the risk of making summer camp and other programs unaffordable for families, I can't recommend a full increase to 15 an hour. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Grimes. I'm going to make my comments now, and then I'll pass it along after. I agree with Commissioner Well and that we should leave it up to staff for the recommendation, and I believe staff gave us a recommendation, which was increase the pay by $2 an hour and make it competitive and put us in line with, you know, we saw in the memo, that puts us in line with other townships. Hey, $15 an hour minimum wage, it feels good, it sounds good, but as Commissioner Grimes just said, there are negative consequences to doing it, and one of the big ones is that summer camp that a lot of our residents depend on for, for their summer care of their kids. And doubling the rate of that camp and the cost of that camp really is not something that I believe we should be doing when staff is saying, "Yes, we are competitive with the $2 an hour raise that, that they've, that they've recommended." I don't believe this is about a living wage. As I look through this list of positions that we're talking about, we're talking about part-time, business intern, summer helper, camp counselor, gate attendant, instructor. You're not, you know, the, I'm, I'm frankly pretty offended by a couple of the comments that we don't treat our employees with dignity and fairness. We do treat our employees with dignity and fairness. We also, and the comment that it's a shanda or an embarrassment, the way we treat our employees is not, is not a shanda. It is not an embarrassment. We treat our employees very well in this township. We pay market rate or above-market rate for employees. And the, this discussion about a $15 minimum wage, it is, as Commissioner Well has said, it's, it's a pretty arbitrary number, and it's not something that even if we said we wanted to pay a living wage, $15 is not the right number. So, I, I believe it's our manager's job and it's our staff's job to recommend what the right wage is to, to pay our employees and be fair to our employees. It's a balance of also the cost and what that means for our residents who are taking advantage of the programs of our libraries, of our summer camps, of our pools. There's a balance there, and I think staff has done a very good job of that balance, and I don't think it is appropriate to kind of blindly set, set a number that, that we're doing just because it feels good when it doesn't make any financial sense, not only to the township, but also to the, to the residents of this township. Commissioner Courtney?
Thank you, Vice President Gavron. First, I'll start with a piece of data, since there seems to be a sense of arbitrariness. I have before me on my computer, I won't bother to share it. MIT's Living Wage Calculator, one adult with zero children in Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, living wage $14.47. $15 is not a number picked out of the air. $15 is a living wage in Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. Now, I, I too, when I first thought about this, was a little bit mixed, right? I look at this list of part-time positions, it don't necessarily look like head of households or teenagers or college kids, maybe seniors, working part-time. And what I realized is, in thinking of it that way, I'm showing my own bias. I'm looking at it from my own privileged existence. Just because you're a teenager or a college student working a part-time job doesn't mean you're not contributing to your household. Thank you.
Please, we would ask, we, we understand everybody's got a community order, but this is not the, the manner in which we normally conduct ourselves. So, Commissioner Courtney, let him finish his comments. That's why we have the opportunity for public comment, so you can speak your mind, but we don't want to have, you know, competing back and forth, you know, applauses and commentary. So, thank you.
You're stealing my thunder, President Bernheim. Anyhow, moving on, the, the idea that to raise this wage to a living wage would then equate to us having to charge more for camps, more for this programming, that's a policy choice. That we are well within our rights to say, or well within our ability, well within our amount of funding, to hold these fees flat and still raise the wage. The cost difference, $350,000. That's a price this township can bear. What's really before us is a human dignity question. What is the cost of someone's time? Right? Is it worth going to a job for something less than $15 an hour? We're seeing a great resignation right now because too many corporations, too many employers haven't considered it that way. We've tried to eke by on what's the bare minimum we can pay for a program like this. What's the bare minimum we can pay for someone's time? And I don't think that's the way we need to operate, and I don't think that's the way we should operate any further. And lastly, the, when you interviewed me for my appointment to this position back in 2019, before I was elected, I made the statement in this boardroom that if you work in Lower Merion Township, you ought to be able to live in Lower Merion Township. That night, it was about affordable housing. Tonight, it's about a living wage. It's two ends of the same problem. I think it's high time that we adopted a living minimum wage. Thank you.
Thank you, President Courtney. Any other comments? Commissioner Durbin and then Commissioner Churchill.
Thank you. I just want to say that minimum wage has not been raised for so many years that it's way, way beyond what the cost of living is. So, it really is for us to, I think, be a leader in this and not just try to figure out what's the least we can pay. I know so many people who are putting together two, three, and four part-time jobs so they can pay their rent, so they can save some money to go to community college, so they can pay for gasoline and car insurance, so they can supplement their social security. And, you know, those of us who, who are far removed from doing that when we were younger or don't have to do it when we're older, really should not ignore the fact that there are people trying really hard to contribute to their families or contribute to their futures. And I also would like to say that we absolutely do not have to raise the cost of summer camp. We can bear some of that cost and let people who need to have a low-cost summer camp for their kids have it. Those of us who, you know, can afford to send our kids away to sleepaway camp, we pay a lot more than that. But there are a lot of people who can't afford that but still need to be able to do things during the day and not have their kids being bored or stuck in front of a television set. So, I think it is time for us to do the right thing, and I think we can set a good example and do what we should do. Thank you.
Thank you, President. Commissioner Churchill?
Thank you very much. My feelings on this issue are more akin to Vice President Gavron, so that's where I stand. If we do go with a, some kind of $15 an hour increase, whether gradual or immediate, I will, last time we had this discussion, I asked Commissioner Kramer if she would support a tax increase to pay for this, and I would second it. So, we're talking about a one, well, about a 1%, maybe 1.5% tax increase. I would think that if that increase isn't approved, then it would be hard to support this $15 an hour. And lastly, I have a question, that if everyone gets $15 an hour, how about the poor, underpaid commissioners? Are we included? Thank you.
And before we begin, I just want to remind you, we're not going to vote on this tonight. This is a discussion about the policy. And when we do have a discussion on the budget itself, that's when an amendment can be proposed. With that said, Commissioner Zelov.
Commissioner Churchill, once again, gets right to the heart of the issue. You know, commissioners' work, we figure about $2 an hour. So, this would, you know, this would go a long way. But it doesn't matter, we're in this for different reasons. This is a bad idea, it's a solution in search of a problem. Look, we're talking, just to make this crystal clear, part-time employees only. There is not one full-time employee in Lower Marion Township, not one, who makes less than $15 an hour. I confirmed that with our manager today. So, let's be clear in what we're talking about. Teenagers, young adults, working in the summer at our pools, at our recreation programs, and some of our part-time library staff, of which we know, has been reported to us that there are more applicants than there are positions. So, whatever's going on in the big country, that's not happening in the library hiring. And our parks director, we didn't tell her what to do, she said, here's my budget, my proposed budget, oh, and by the way, I want to increase pay $2 an hour because I think that's necessary in order to be able to attract the summer workforce that we need to support the summer programs and pools in the township. She didn't ask our approval, she just reported it. This is not what the governing body should be doing. This is what our management team should be doing. We've got a very capable management team, and this is actually good management practice. There are small townships out there where the commissioners are in every day and helping run the township and saying, hire my friend and pay him this much. That doesn't happen in Lower Marion Township. So, the way we do things is, in this regard, is sound business practice. The Vice President Gavron, once again, is spot-on in how he looks at this. And to suggest, even raise the question of the management of this township in regard to the dignity and fairness with which employees are treated is simply wrong. This is a extraordinarily, you know, high expense without a reason. And so, we have a budget that's been proposed and addresses the needs of hiring the part-time workforce. Oh, and one other final comment, this isn't about a state minimum wage, it's not about the federal minimum wage, it's not, those are big issues, not for this local governing body to discuss. It's about what makes sense in this township. And I think we have a lot of people here who want to talk about the budget and what goes into our budget, and I don't think we should be spending any more time on this idea. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Zelov. Despite you not wanting to spend any more time on this, Commissioner Sinai.
Thank you, Vice President Gavron. And I was just saying, I'm delighted that we're spending this much time on it. I think there's important conversations to have, and I think it's terrific that we don't all agree and we debate it out. I think this is one of the wonderful things about this township, is that we have this form of government. So, let me just say, I think the township is outstanding at providing a competitive wage. I don't think we ever have unfilled positions, really, right? We pay enough to get people in. That's not what this discussion is about. I think this discussion is about, is there some other wage that we should be setting that's higher than that? Because, you know, we want to lead by example, we think, you know, it's important for us to provide that, that's kind of the right thing to do, as people said. And, you know, people who listened to me a few weeks ago, where I didn't think that was a wise idea, will recognize that I have thought about it since I have changed my position, I do think it makes sense. I think it makes sense for us. In the same way that we think we should pilot EVs because you kind of want to be a leader. I think this is an issue that we, as a government, should lead on and we should set an example on. And that's how I come to thinking about this. So, you know, I too, like the commissioner next to me, look at data. Data, you know, can be messy. The same MIT Living Wage Calculator has one adult with no children at a living wage of about $14.50, two adults with no children with a living wage of $11.50 because they're basically roommates. I come at this as, you know, splitting the difference and saying it should be around 13. That seems to me to be where the data is, but I can recognize you have different perceptions based off of what's going on. But that, and that's with no children. And that kind of takes you to this idea of, well, what does it mean for a part-time worker? To me, when I look at someone who's working as a camp supervisor in the summer, or they're an intern, they at the least are in an apartment, and we should assume that they are. And they need to pay rent, and they need to buy food, and they need to buy gasoline, and they need a living wage to do it. Even if they only need a living wage for three months out of the year because somehow they're doing something else the other nine months out of the year where they don't need money, like during these three months of the year, I think they should get a living wage. I think that's the right thing to do, I think that's where we should be. And so, the only question then in my mind is then how do we pay for it and how do we get there? So, I do think it is difficult, you know, we'll leave it up to management to advise us, to go straight from where we are to a number. I think we probably have to phase it in over time, over two or three years, that does make sense to me, to get there, to target a living wage. I will tell you, the living wage increases over time because we all know costs are going up, and so we will be increasing with there. And the second, and by the way, I think for a lot of our positions, we're there already, right? So, there's only a tail of positions where we are under that wage. And then the second is how do people afford the pools and the camps? And there, I joined my colleagues in saying, you know, if it is a decision of the township that this is something that is right to do, then it is something the township should pay for, and it should not be the users of the program. So, you tie the use fees to kind of where the cost level is now. And the growth that we're imposing on that should be something that's funded out of township general budget, in my opinion. But I am not at 15, I don't think the data supports 15. But I am at a number, sort of, a couple of dollars below that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sinai. Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you. I'm in line with Commissioner Sinai in so far as we're not at $15 yet. And the data locally from Montgomery County for the region doesn't bear that out. If you look at county statistics or MIT, all the data suggests it's just too high at this point. Further, I think the $15 implication would mean that anybody applying for this position, positions, plural, somehow believes that there is a higher degree of expectation or responsibility with the position because they're elevated, this idea of being elevated. And not every position is that. I was a lifeguard through high school for years, loved it, and I made no money. I made enough money to buy golf balls and go out with my friends and have fun. And that was about it. I wasn't a head of household. I can't say for certain because I don't know every part-time staffer in the library or in public works or at our pools or for summer camps. But I think it's pretty safe to say that these are people like me, growing up with a summer job. Was so grateful to have time and to be able to interact with people at my workplace and enjoyed it and learned valuable skills there, almost like an unpaid internship. And I made a fine hourly wage. I think the other thing too is the, we have to be careful about cost recovery on this. And I'm hearing, and I respect my colleagues who say it's okay to underrate yet another program. I'm not so sure about that. You know, we are not in the business of giving out. We have to be able to recover some of the projects and programs that we are spending time and money on to deploy well and are very popular. And our camps are stellar. And if we want to keep the pool fees low and highly subsidized, then we can't do all three. So, will we increase the pool fees to make sure camp is low? I'm not sure we're there yet. And I frankly believe that the pools are probably more important to keep low than camps are to keep high. But we can't have all three, for an example. And I also think, I'm not sure whether our offices would do this, but there's also data that shows that when you increase an hourly rate, wage rate, that they get fewer hours. And that if you're at a grocery store and you need to purchase more with inflationary periods and you're needing to pay your workers more, that's going to be higher grocery costs and you will get fewer hours. There is a trickle-down, not to go 1980s, but it is true. It absolutely filters down to other people in the marketplace. You can't have it all. And we want to be able to give things to people that are fair and good experiences about being in a fantastic place, but we have to be sensible. And I don't think we're there at 15 yet, but thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. Any other comments from the board? And again, Mr. Trout?
I just want to make sure that there's no additional questions or information you need from staff on this. You will continue to debate it, maybe have a budget amendment, but there's nothing else at least you need or questions from a staff perspective, from myself, Ms. Heller, Mr. Belanger?
Congratulations.
Okay, thank you.
You stole my thunder. We are not voting on it now. If there is a budget amendment at some point during the appropriate time, then there will be a budget amendment at the appropriate time. Thank you, Donna and David and Eric, for all of the information. It's incredibly helpful. And that takes us to our fourth, our fourth item on the budget, or on the agenda, sorry about that. And this, seeing how there is a lot of people here, I'm guessing we'll see some public comment on this. This is a discussion about the American Rescue Plan funding allocation. This time, instead of calling on our CFO, I guess I will call on our co-chair of the Finance Committee, Vice President Gavron, to walk us through the memo on this, as I wrote it. So, after that, we will go to public comment and then board comments and questions. So, to walk everyone through this memo, I'll start with the process. And as we discussed in September, the Finance Committee chairs started by soliciting ideas for use of these funds. The township received, or was told we're going to receive approximately $25 million between 2021 and 2022 in American Rescue Plan or ARP funds. So, we reached out to our fellow commissioners to ask for proposals for what to do with this, with these funds. A lot of the commissioners solicited use of these funds from their constituents as well. Talked to staff. Ultimately, we submitted over 50 proposals for the use of these funds, which totaled tens and tens of millions of dollars, more than the $25 million we received. So, the chairs working with township management then spent essentially the month of October, meeting and meeting and meeting, reviewing the ideas, analyzing them, debating them, before deciding on a recommendation. And when we did that, we followed a few general principles. The first was to only at this point allocate the 2021 fund, so half of what the total allocation was. Because we've seen so much uncertainty that it didn't make sense to do the entire amount now to keep our options open, to see what 2021 looks like because additionally, the regulations on these funds were in part based on the financial performance of the township. We don't know that yet. So, we decided to hold off on allocating the 2022 half of the funds. So, that was certainly the first principle we decided upon. Next, we decided to recommend spend on one-time projects only. Really, because this is one-time money. So, projects requiring an annual investment, things like hiring additional staff, while they may or may not make sense for the township, to us didn't make sense for this bucket of money. Similarly, any operating expenses, even ones that were, you know, considered one-time operating expenses, impact our annual budget, have a lasting impact. So, again, the idea is not that those are bad ideas or they're good ideas, no judgment on the ideas themselves, but for this pool of money, which again is one-time money, we decided they really should not be on things that have an annual impact. That led us to capital projects. And since we have a well-thought-through and very comprehensive capital improvement plan, a CIP, we use that as our baseline. We decided that there were a couple of ideas that were not already in our CIP, and our CIP has all of our priority projects, priority capital projects in there. So, we decided to look through those ideas, and there were a few ideas that we said made sense to add to our CIP, even though it's outside of our normal capital improvement project process. But because everyone had an opportunity to think more deeply about the capital projects that make sense as a project or as a, for our township, this would be a good idea to look at these and say, hey, if there's something really good, really high priority, we should add it into the CIP. And ultimately, we decided to add a few projects in and then ultimately make a decision on which projects to allocate the money to. So, as we looked at which projects to allocate this bucket of money to, we really looked at a couple of criteria, the first being projects that would most help those that were highly impacted by the COVID pandemic. We also wanted highly visible projects, things that you could truly see the impact of this money and have a long-lasting impact on the township. We also wanted to spread the projects throughout the township. They're not all in the eastern end of the project, they're not all on the western end of the township. They are spread throughout, some are in the more densely populated, some are in the less densely populated areas. They're really spread across the township. And really, we wanted to put this money to projects that this money would really have an impact on. It would make the projects easier to get to completion, more certain, to do it earlier. Really, projects where having this money would be help, would be helpful. So, ultimately, the chairs of the Finance Committee working with township management recommended five projects for the use of these funds. The first, and the vast majority of the money, would be to the Ardmore Community Center and Palm, really to help, you know, those really impacted financially from COVID. It's also something that's been desperately needed for the township. It's something that I think across the board, the commissioners have said, this is something we need to do. And having this money, talking to our township manager, would really help get this project done quicker, bring it closer to completion in a shorter amount of time. The next, the next project that we recommended was in the Ashbridge Master Plan, which was really to improve our historic Class I Ashbridge House in the township, in the park in the middle of our township at Ashbridge Park. We currently have a memorandum of understanding with New Horizons Senior Center, who really is desperate to move to a new permanent home. We've previously identified Ashbridge House as a great location for them, and the real issue is the money to do this. And how do we get the building into shape, make it handicap accessible, really improve, put, you know, the ideas are including improving, putting an elevator in. Right now, the bathroom and the kitchen are not handicap accessible. So, improve those and make those changes and use this money to really have an impact and create a permanent home for New Horizons at the Class I historic Ashbridge House. The third is putting money into our fire apparatus replacement, recognizing the tremendous work that our fire companies and our volunteer firefighters did throughout this pandemic. We talked about earlier about really valuing our employees and while the firefighters are actually with our fire companies and many are volunteers and they're not employees, really recognizing the incredible work that they do on behalf of our township and make sure we're allocating some of this to get them the equipment that they need to be able to do their jobs. Fourth is the East Levering Mill Pedestrian and Bike Study. This is a project we've talked about for a long time over our last couple of CIP workshops. And it is a project that we've begun and has phased in over three phases. And by allocating ARP money here, it's an opportunity to move that up and move this project up to a higher priority and get it completed more quickly to make it a safer pedestrian and bike avenue and really get the signal work in the sidewalk done quicker than we otherwise could. And then the last piece of it is allocating assets to stormwater management. Stormwater management is not only a huge township responsibility, but it's also a very important piece as we've seen as floods have, and weather has gotten more extreme over recent years, struggling with, dealing with it. I know I've gotten calls from neighbors about stormwater and runoff and issues, and I'm sure every single member of this board has gotten many of those calls as well. Being able to allocate some of this money to stormwater management as well is a really important thing and something that we felt is important. important. As I said earlier, we also recommended adding four projects into the CIP. This is over $3 million in, in cost of projects, leaving it to staff to recommend how and when to fund, to allocate funds to these projects. Three of these four are related to the Kenwood Heritage Trail, recognizing that the usage of the Kenwood Heritage Trail increased greatly, recognizing the value of it, to improve the Norfolk Southern Rail Tunnel, which connects it to surrounding trails, expanding access to the trail, really are, are things that, that we felt were important and should be in our, in our CIP. And the, the fourth one was adding money for additional pickleball courts in our township parks. We've received many, many comments from residents that this is something that is truly important. This is something that has grown in popularity. A number of Lower Marion residents go to surrounding towns when they really would like to stay here and have this amenity within our town, and thought it made sense to add it into the CIP as well. There really is a, a clamoring for this as well. So those, that in a very, very brief nutshell was our recommendation. I do want, before I go to public comment, want to ask either Commissioner Zelov or Commissioner McCombe if I've missed anything, anything they want to add at this point. There will also obviously be opportunity for comment later on.
Vice President Gavron, you wrote the memo, and Commissioner McCombe and I pitched in, but thank you for your great work on this, and I think your explanation covered everything.
Great.
I agree.
Great, thank you. So before we get to Commissioner Comment, wanted to start out with public comment. Seeing that, I'm guessing there's going to be a lot of public comment, I will ask everybody to try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. We're not going to be as strict as if we were at, at the actual board meeting, but in, in, with respect to everybody else here, ask that you please be brief with your comments. And, I'm sorry?
And refrain from applause.
Yes, and, and as we heard before, if we could refrain from applause and comments when you're not at the podium. Everyone does have the opportunity to make comments as they wish. When you do make comments, please introduce yourself first, and then the floor will be yours. So we will start with public comment. If anyone wants to go up to the podium, please go ahead.
My name is Frances Mosley, and I am
the President of the Board for the Palm. So I thank you for this opportunity you're giving me to speak in behalf of the Palm. And I want to thank the Commissioners for putting budget money in for our building. Our building no longer meets our needs. It is past its prime, and we certainly appreciate the fact that we will be able to expand our offerings and our programs in a new building. So I want to thank you for that. We have managed many challenges to keep the Palm open in 2020 and 2021, and we are, our funding is down for many reasons, but one is we haven't been able to do fundraisers because of the pandemic. Montgomery County aging changed the way they fund senior programs, and we are, our dues, our membership dues are down because some of our seniors are still not ready to come back into the building. So we're looking for ways to offer programs, and as well as to be able to satisfy the needs. Our seniors are isolated. They're alone. They're lonely. We need to be able to address those issues with them. Couple things that we're doing is, we're providing frozen lunches. They can drive through and pick up five lunches a week. We are doing wellness calls because we want to reach out and make sure for our, for our seniors' mental health that they are doing okay. So I just want to take this opportunity to thank you and to say, if there's some more funding somewhere to do our operations, to be able to replace the money we're missing out on, we would certainly appreciate it. So thank you very much for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you. And I want to let people know, both podiums are available. Thank you for the, both podiums are available, so we'll just alternate. We'll kind of make it a little quicker and help everybody out a little bit.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Linda Stevenson, y estoy aquí como representante de las personas latinos que hablan español en su comunidad. My name is Linda Stevenson. I am a resident of Bryn Mawr. I am here this evening to represent Spanish-speaking people who live right here among us in the Lower Marion. This year during COVID, I was made aware of the need for Lower Marion School Lunches to get to Spanish-speaking families right as it began. And my family and I were enlisted, because we're bilingual, to help out a group that has now become a nonprofit called Neighbors Helping Neighbors. They were associated with different groups in Ardmore, including the Ardmore Avenue Community Center and others to try to assist with these needs. And Manera Walker has done an amazing job of continuing to create opportunity for people who don't have enough, not even food, right? And there are people who are serving us in restaurants, in, you know, all along Micah's Avenue, and the kinds of work that are not paid very highly. So these are families who have a lot of kids in school. So after the food distribution began, then we began also with tutoring. As you know, last year was extremely stressful for students. Imagine trying to learn English and content and not having enough Wi-Fi or laptop or tablet to make it work. So this is where we enlisted ourselves and my sons and others to help out in these processes, and I'll leave it to my son to tell you a little bit more about that. But there's ongoing need, and we've talked, we're beginning to talk about it more with the district about the need for more translation, because there are an increasing number of Spanish speakers who don't, the families do not have adequate translation. They do not have adequate technology, can't afford it. And they're a part of our community. So that's who I'm here to represent, and I appreciate the opportunity to make comment about that. So my, my goal is that you would consider, please, funding Neighbors Helping Neighbors, which is a very, very important community organizing group that has enlisted many volunteers to help with meeting these needs, so far for free, but it's pretty stressful to continue to do that. I'm a professor at West Duster University, and I work with a lot of people who understand this and also, you know, are, are putting in way, way many hours than, than we have available in our lives to do this in a way that's sustainable. So in terms of making Lower Marion sustainable to these people as well as those who, you know, have, these are more people who could really need this support. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Miguel Romero Stevenson. That's my mom. I attend Herndon High School currently, and I'm a part of the International Baccalaureate or IB program at Herndon. So I started working with Neighbors Helping Neighbors at the start of the pandemic with my brother, and originally, we were just doing deliveries of the school lunches for the kids who needed them. And eventually, we were able to employ some of my brother's friends in that task as well, of delivering foods. And it's a great opportunity for the students especially, who are in need of service hours and they're willing to. It's also a great experience otherwise, to kind of like familiarize yourself more with Lower Marion in that not everything about it is perfect or, you know, not everybody is the same in Lower Marion. Not everybody is that middle class that's wealthy and stable. And eventually, I started, at the start of 2021, I started tutoring with some of the kids who we familiarized ourselves with through the food deliveries. And I was also able to have some of my friends join in with that. Again, just kind of the service aspect of it, which is very critical for high school students, also for IB students, because service is a requirement for obtaining the IB diploma. So yeah, Neighbors Helping Neighbors has been a great opportunity for myself especially, and others who I've been able to get into the organization as well. Yeah, for students, it's great. For the community, it's great. Yeah, I just endorsing the same idea as my mom had mentioned, that Neighbors Helping Neighbors could really use some of the extra funds. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jody Kelly and Ernie McNeely are Township Manager and Township Secretary. Isabel Melvin, Wynwood, Pennsylvania. And I just have a question about the ABC of, there's a 1 million, 1 million, 1 million. Is that all for Kenwood Heritage Trail?
So the way, the way we operate at the end of, at the end of
Okay, all right. I'll give you time. I'm going to assume that it's all for the Kenwood Heritage Trail. And I love the Kenwood Heritage Trail, and you all have worked very hard, by the way. I appreciate very much how hard you've worked on getting this list. I would like to see, and I'm also with Climate Action Lower Marion, instead of, I think it's really easy to go to where the Kenwood Heritage Trail is and do something. The tricky and the challenging thing would be to go to our business districts along Montgomery Avenue, Lancaster Avenue, and City Avenue, our side, to make them more pedestrian and bicycle friendly. I really think that underserved communities who depend on walking to SEPTA or riding their bikes to SEPTA, we need to be safe, and I think we could do better there. I also ride my bike. I like, I prefer to ride my bike than drive. And today, I rode up from my house along Lancaster Avenue, and it was really tough. I was on the sidewalk the whole time, and it's tricky. So I can imagine people who are going to work in all those buildings and that business district along there, it's tricky. In addition, another area where I was today, over by Lincolnal Hospital, at the southeast corner, I don't know if you can picture it, if you're coming from Wynwood, you go down to City Avenue. And on that corner there, I tried to cross the street over to where St. Charles Seminary is. There's a no-turn-on red sign there. I got the red, the white pedestrian go sign, and people are turning right, right there. That's just one example. I feel we could take that $3 million to make our township more accessible for pedestrians and cyclists, just keeping people safe instead of getting into a car. Thank you very much. I appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, Ms. Melvin.
Good evening. My name is Mike Liebowitz. I just wanted to comment, that moves, wow. I just wanted to comment very briefly. I think that there were a lot of people who were very disappointed by the guardrails that seemingly were put on the use of this money. The projects that are proposed are all very good projects, but there's a lot of other organizations in this township that were also counting on that money. I mean, ultimately, a large sum of money came to the township, and the township's decided to use it to fill a hole in the township's budget around these capital improvement projects. But the truth of the matter is, there are countless people and organizations in this township who have found holes in their own budgets. People who have found themselves to be food insecure, housing insecure, people who have lost work because of the pandemic or had an inability to use public transportation because of health concerns during the pandemic. And so, sure, these are all great projects, and we'd all like to see capital improvements. Pickleball is obviously very important to some people. But at the same time, I think there was an expectation from all of us that a portion of these funds were going to go to people who were most hurt by the pandemic. This is local government. This is the portion of government that interacts most closely with people. And so you have become the steward of these funds that have been sent to us by the federal government. And obviously, that's great, but I don't think that the expectation was that these funds would simply sit in township projects. And so there's a whole list of additional projects that were passed over. There was a determination that was made not to spend on one-time expenditures. But why not spend on one-time expenditures? Why not revisit some of those proposals that were passed over? And, you know, frankly, I think that $1 million or $500,000 out of this very large expenditure could go a very long way towards helping ElderNet, our firehouses, our other communities, some of the smaller projects that are out there. I understand the desire to get funds out to a large swath of the township, so let's get funds out to a large swath of the township. I would strongly encourage you to revisit this and to strongly consider spreading some of these funds around to the different organizations and people in the township who also find a hole in their budget, with the hope that we can make the expenditures a bit more equitable and reach more people more quickly. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bill Leopold from Marion. I'm the Board of the Palm. Spent about half a century as a therapist. I particularly focus in working with seniors. The new census that came in showed that about 21.8% of our township is seniors. I suspect that's at least a few of us in this room, certainly myself included. That adds up to about almost 14,000 people in our community, 65 and older. For those who've been, all of us going through the pandemic isolation, many of us are fortunate enough to have computers, to know how to use them, to have families that are very attentive. Not everyone is so fortunate. Many of our seniors have not been able to attend the program. What happens in our community when people can't eat out? Restaurants get permission, or not. They put outside dining. They have heat. They have lights. They have new electric panels. So although our, in addition to, thank goodness for the new building, but when we're talking in the words Palm Operations, as it was called, the money we're requesting is so that our seniors can actually come to the place. I have not yet gone to an inside restaurant. This is my first building I've been inside in a couple of years. I'm a high-risk senior. I go to outside restaurants because I feel safe. If I'm at the Ardmore House or isolated in Ardmore or Wynwood, I'm not going to go into a building. I'm going to be isolated, and all the statistics, which I won't quote, make it clear that I would be at much higher risk, sliding back on my dementia, isolation, food insecurity. I'm going to be at more risk. Senior centers have a unique ability to engage people, which is what we all need. Thank God we have kids back in school, so there's engagement. We need that at our age. We need to be able to go to a senior center, sit outside with peers, have an outside class, have heat, have a large television screen, have yoga exercises, have prayer, have reading, all the things we do to be social, to eat with other people outside, even in the winter, like restaurants do. That's what this operational money is asking. Thank goodness a building will come. That takes a couple of years. Meantime, we need people to be able to function and be social while we're awaiting that building to happen. Thank you.
Hey, all. Micah Sneed with Ardmore Progressive. Just want to say for the crowd, thank you so much. Like, these are such great points and really important, and it, you know, is hard to sit through three hours of a meeting to get the opportunity to kind of have your voice heard. And, but it is so important, and I, you know, I think like Emily Crane, next time she has to do a, a public hearing for Community Development Block Grant, would love to have this type of input and this type of interaction. But to the points that have been made, this money does have less guardrails on it and can be used more extensively than a Community Development Block Grant can. And so it's confusing why there's a much more narrow process. We also can't really explain to our civic members how the addition or, or how the principles align with some of the projects. We love and are really excited about the Community Center in the Palm, dedicated funding. We love and are really excited about the Community Center in the Palm, dedicated funding. We'd love to see probably three or four times that. But that is going to create outlying costs. That's going to create more staff positions, presumably more services, and greater operating costs, especially based on some of the projections we've seen from the feasibility study for that. So that doesn't exactly line up with what we're being told about. We don't want to create new things. We don't want to create new outlays for expenses. And I can't wrap my head around a bicycle trail helping the people most impacted by COVID. I'm sure there's some logic that gets you there eventually. But the lack of transparency that's really concerning for me and for our members is why folks had to come and find out after last week's meeting how the process or what process was in place, what equity was used. We were kind of, I mean, Commissioner Stevenson, Ward Four, told us. Commissioner Durbin said, hey, we need ideas, very informally. There was never a request for proposals. There's never a request, to my knowledge, sent out to civics, sent out to organizations that are already doing these services. On the walk over here tonight, I walked past a storefront of Viva Video that appears to have a two-by-four holding up the overhang. Coming through the lobby, I see a donation bin for ElderNet. It's hard to believe that we don't have things right now that we can inject this money into that can make a difference in the businesses that line our areas here with the people that need the services of a Palm, of the Community Center, and ElderNet, that we can't plug money into that. And yes, we love the idea. Obviously, we're a little biased about the Shack and the Palm, and we want to see those funds go there. But that is a responsibility that we want to see the township handle and have a plan for and understand the timeline of. But we can't, I mean, it's just been, y'all have already said it, so I won't try to repeat it. But this has been described as like a windfall, as a rainy day fund. But for a lot of people outside of this building, it is pouring rain, and they need relief. If there is CARES Act funding that's not being spent, we need to identify that. I don't know why we're moving toward passing a budget for next year without talking about reallocation. I know that's on the way, and we're planning and getting more information for staff. But it doesn't feel responsible to dedicate more money while we're being told that there's funding for services from other sources. But we can't see where that's going, and maybe we'll find out about it after the budget pass. But thanks to all y'all for being here.
Hi, my name is Trinity Dixon, and I'm from Wynwood. And I'm reading some comments from Jamie Baseman, who is from Ardmore, who couldn't be here this evening. She would like all of you to hear that, she says, "I would like to speak out in favor of whatever funding and support the township can provide for neighbors helping neighbors on the main line." And she says, "During the darkest days of this pandemic, Neighbors Helping Neighbors began to work to address the challenges of food insecurity and childcare affordability by mobilizing volunteers to provide everything from toilet paper to individual tutoring to sensory items for fidgety kids trying to learn remotely." She says, "We speak about the importance of diversity, equity, and inclusion in Lower Marion." And she said, "And this is a concrete way to do the necessary work together and truly fulfill our role as neighbors." And I would just like to add for myself that I feel that Neighbors Helping Neighbors really got in there when, as I guess, this pandemic-related economic impacts that's mentioned in this Board of Commissioners meeting, when it was really needed in our community. It really, you know, caught the people that were, as a lot of people have spoken tonight, weren't able to, you know, provide for themselves. And a lot of the people that are part of this, I mean, as they said, it's completely volunteered. I mean, and way over 40 hours a week people are putting in for the good of the community. And, you know, it's a very humane operation. And it fulfills such a purpose in our community for people who really are not, as someone had mentioned earlier, in this middle-class area of, that I certainly take for granted myself. I don't have food scarcity problems or issues. And, but there are a lot of people out there that are hurting and suffering. And, you know, parents that aren't able to be there for their children. I mean, I know you all know this, you know, what a strain it was on anybody, whether you had money or not, especially if you had young children, you know, at home and trying to, you know, keep them up to speed for school. And there are some people that, you know, it was very difficult. So I just want to put a plug in for Neighbors Helping Neighbors. If there's anything you can do for them, I would really appreciate it because I know that they're just helping our entire community by, you know, making sure that everybody in our community is able to at least have the basics to survive. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Anna Barnes from Hester. And I'd like you all to pretend for a few minutes that I'm Neil McShay from McShay's Pub in Ardmore.
Could I ask you to speak into the microphone?
Is that better?
Go away.
Okay. So I'd like to, all for you to pretend that I'm Neil McShay from Jack McShay's Pub in Ardmore because he can't be here, but he has a statement he'd like to read. So, speaking as Neil McShay, we've been in business in Ardmore since January of 2012 and enjoyed much prosperity over the last 10 years. Before COVID hit our area, our business had become primarily bar business, food and drink, as I'm sure you all know. Our catering festival and to-go business was a very small part of our business, probably accounting for less than 5%. When necessary restrictions were put in place, we, of course, tried to maintain some sort of business to keep my employees working. We actually met as a group and decided to change everything we were doing and become a takeout catering establishment, which was no easy undertaking. And I'm sure that some other restaurants found this easier than others. It was not easy for us. Early on, I was contacted by the Ardmore Food Bank to see if we would be interested in putting together meals for people that were hard-hit not only by this crisis, but people that struggled with finding meals on a day-to-day basis. To be honest, it was a godsend for us because we needed every dollar we could earn just to stay open. In the end, we found this program to be very valuable to us, and it really helped us financially. Plus, it was a win-win. We were collecting some revenue and producing some good meals for people who really needed them. So something good came out of all this. So what I would say to you is that I think this program should continue, if it is at all possible, because things could slide back at any time for everyone. And speaking as myself, again, I think sort of things like the Ardmore Food Bank and the other food banks in the community, and the Neighbors Helping Neighbors is something that is the best of our community. It's people just giving their time to help others who are in greater need. And I would really ask that you try and find the funds from this recovery plan to just help them and donate that to them. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Marion Phillips. I'm from Ardmore, lifelong township resident. I really appreciate the work your committee put into, the recommendations that you made. I'm going to ask you to reconsider them. I think that this money, the American Rescue Plan money, needs to rescue people and small businesses and those who are mostly and mainly impacted by the pandemic. I understand the idea to make this work for some township projects. But to be honest, I'd be awfully surprised if this infrastructure bill that was just passed doesn't throw some more money at us. So I looked back at what the CBDBG program put together in terms of COVID relief, and the highest number as a dollar figure that I could find was $980,000. That is nothing compared to $12 million or $25 million. So I really think there's an opportunity to rethink even this first half of what has been set aside for 2021 to look at ElderNet, Ardmore House, Neighbors Helping Neighbors, all of the agencies that are working so hard to have interpersonal relationships with people. And, you know, that's all I really wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from anyone in the room?
Good evening. My name's Manira Walker. I'm the Executive Director and founder of Neighbors Helping Neighbors on the Main Line, 131 Walnut Avenue, Ardmore. I'm going to mostly read from the script so I don't take up too much of your time. I generally speak off the cuff, but I did put it in writing so that I wouldn't belabor any points. I wanted to tell you, Commissioner Dahlheim, that I actually became very good friends with Sean Hughes because we did a lot of work in the school district for the benefit of people who cannot advocate for themselves. And just since September, Sean personally sent three different families to Neighbors Helping Neighbors for things that they could not address in the school system. This is how integral Neighbors Helping Neighbors has become for our township and our residents. We've become a trusted entity. I know we're young. We're young because we formed out of the COVID pandemic needs. That's the only reason we're young. My advocacy extends for the last decade. Thankfully, I was able to use that to put something in place quickly so that this township would not suffer the perils that other communities were suffering because it didn't have a plan in place, because nobody knew they were going to have to develop a plan in February that was going to fix everything for April. So with all due respect, that's how I'm coming to this evening, Commissioners. I'm appealing to you on behalf of our organization and also all of our residents of Lower Marion Township who are in need of any sort of assistance. We are requesting funding for general operations, and I know that's your strike three on your list, but we're asking you to reconsider it. Okay? We're requesting funding for general operations and initiatives, including Restaurant Rescue. Until you upgrade the Palm, those seniors needed to be addressed. We're addressing them. We're feeding them. We're going to their houses and visiting with them. They trust us to come in. They don't trust coming out. And we're the ones that are caring for the seniors. We're the ones that are caring for the children. We're the ones that are doing everything that no one in the township has been able to find a way to do yet. I say all of this very respectfully. But I'm telling you, that is coming close to two years now. And we're worn, and we're tired, and we're working hard. And all we're asking for is your support. And we're not even asking you for your money. We're asking you for money the government gave to do the things that we're doing so that people will not suffer needlessly through this pandemic. So generously, and we're very thankful, allowed us some money that was left over from your 2020-2021 CBDG funding. And we're really thankful for that. It allowed us to open a space, which has become crucial in the advancement of the work. It paid for six months' rent for that. We're very thankful for that. It also paid some money towards salaries, just for three people out of the myriad and many people that work for us all the time as volunteers. But it paid for those three people for three months at less than 50% of what anyone else that does their position would be paid. The other 50% has been donated in kind. Prior to that money, us getting that money, all of us worked for a year and a half at 100% in-kind donation. We have been doing the work that really is a responsibility of the township to provide for the people. And we've been doing it for free. And we're asking now, please, please, help us. This pandemic is not over. We don't know when we're going to take another turn. We have to be in existence because we're the structure that is serving the people right now. I also really, you know, sometimes I try to be very favorable with my words. And anything that I'm saying, please don't take as personal hits. But I have got to express to you what this is doing to those of us in the community who have their feet on the ground and the tears on their pillows taking care of all this work. Okay? Our demographics, our demographics from Neighbors Helping Neighbors is what allows this township to say, serve those who are food insecure, check. Serve those who need educational assistance, check. Serve the low-income families, check. Serve the seniors, check. Serve the disabled, check. Our demographics are proving all of that for Lower Marion Township. And all we're asking Lower Marion Township to do is, please, help us. Please, at least help us. I'm losing good people because I cannot pay them. They are the structure. If I lose the structure, you lose the structure. Our entire township loses the structure. Okay, I'm going a little off the cuff here because I know all that wasn't in writing. But I'm sorry, that's my nature. At this stage, I doubt any of you have gotten by without hearing at least someone's story about NHN, whether they're a recipient of services, a volunteer, a donor, or someone who has a friend or family member who may have been helped. You know already that we assist with food insecurity, educational programming, and connecting residents with outside available services. What you may not know is since we opened our space on September 11th, our advocacy work has heightened. And this month alone, we've assisted families with challenges such as mental health, homelessness, domestic violence, eviction, murder, and more. Since September 11th, this is the work we're doing with the families. People's states of mind have changed since COVID, and it's worsening. We also serve as an avenue for community service. So we're working directly with the judges and the police department. And people who need to do community service hours are coming to Neighbors Helping Neighbors. Our process is not just to have them come in and out of a swinging door. We sit down with them. We talk with them. We help change and heal their mindset. And every single one that has come through, and we've had at least 10 in the last month and a half, every single one stayed on as volunteers after their community service was done. These are not light matters. These are not small things. These are healing our community. I really need you to hear that. This is healing the community, and we need your support. We need you to be part of our community.
Ms. Walker, I don't mean to be rude, and I don't want to
I'm almost done.
Okay, thank you.
And I understand you asked for a three-minute limit, but I also understand it doesn't pertain to this. And also, I want you to understand that even though if I take 10 minutes, I'm speaking for hundreds of voices. So I could have asked them all to come here, but I didn't because I know it can carry on. So I'm sorry, if you just, for one more minute,
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Mr. Gavin, and I appreciate, Commissioner Gavin, I appreciate that you're listening. It's not, it doesn't escape me that there are a couple people in this room, and I knew they would do it, that had their head down the whole time all of us have been talking. It's not fair. So I was almost done. Whatever. Okay. Through the help of great neighbors, we are assisting families with the needs that are directly affecting their households and their lives. Our entire township is investing in this for the wellness of our residents. Several of you contribute your own time to helping us at Neighbors Helping Neighbors, and we are truly appreciative. In our network, each person or business contributes in the area that is comfortable for them without causing their own hardship. We're asking our township officials to lend their support by funding the operations of Neighbors Helping Neighbors so everyone can benefit, both in operational costs and Restaurant Rescue, which we directly provide assistance to struggling restaurants, food to hungry citizens, and part-time jobs for several low-income residents. We're checking all the boxes. So during last week's board meeting, some members of the Finance Committee referred to the ARP money as a windfall. So within the exuberance, we are respectfully asking that you make sure some of that wind blows in the direction of the people who need it the most. blows in the direction of the people who need it the most. So thank you for your attention and your anticipated support. Good night.
Adrian Seltzer Winwood. I too am here on behalf of Neighbors Helping Neighbors. I know that you have CARES money left that's there for rent relief, for utilities, and other items like that. Neighbors Helping Neighbors has a network, a trusted network, in the underserved areas of this township, and they're doing your job. They are supporting through their own funds these people so they're not evicted. So that CARES money really belongs to them because that's the work that they're doing. So I would strongly suggest that you find a way to work with them so that the money that you have, that's still there for rent relief, for utilities to provide so there's not evictions, all that CARES money be directed to a place where it can be used the way it was meant to be used. Also, the first thing, on the Finance Subcommittee had several meetings. The first thing for the use of the American Rescue Plan is to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic inputs, impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, and nonprofits, or to aid impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. You can do all of that by supporting Neighbors Helping Neighbors, the Restaurant Rescue Program, and it's easy. It should be a no-brainer. Please support them. That's really what the money was for. It's not for trails. It's not for... It's not, I mean, some of the stuff you had on this list was really good. And, and, I mean, the Palm, the Palm deserves the money, but that should have been something that's been in your budget for the last decade. So, you know, use this money. Please help the people that need the help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seltzer.
Good evening. My name is Roxanna Hazard-Wright, and I have been a resident of Ardmore almost all of my life. I am also co-chair of Power Main Line, which is a social justice organization. We absolutely are supporting Neighbors Helping Neighbors. And even though you have all this money, I would rather you even think even more so over the fact of the reaction afterwards, that when you, as Commissioners, do this to help these people who you may think may not make it, or they might make it, but in the end, it would be so nice that through the years, they can come back and say, these were the Commissioners. You were the ones that helped them to become whom they should become or could become. And just think of the tax dollars you save by helping them because you never know who these people may become. I have been blessed to have a family where my parents worked and did social justice work in this community. And I'm also blessed that I have a sister who is now a retired judge in Northern California who's got a book out called Her Honor. But it happened because of organizations like Neighbors Helping Neighbors, people who have come and said they're worth it. These are people that are worth it, and I just hope and pray they are worth it to you because in the end, oh, the power you will have, oh, the power you will have after you've helped somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments for anyone in the room? Seeing none, I know we have one online comment. Jody, we, I believe it's Brandon Trumbatta from ElderNet.
Thank you for having me tonight. At the beginning of the pandemic, ElderNet was in a very, very unique position in that we did not have to close down or limit our services in any way. We were able to take our services, move them remotely, and continue to support the community as we had for 45 years at that point. In April, in around about April, I was approached by Lower Marion Township to ask how ElderNet might be able to support the community in different ways. And out of this was born our restaurant program that we have operated and created a collaborative with other food pantries to address. In two allotments, we have received over $110,000 in HUD funding to support local businesses, to support the restaurants in the community, to purchase restaurant meals from them that are then distributed from our food pantries in the community. That's 100, over $110,000 that we have taken on and has gone right back into the community. In those funding, we could have taken 10% of those funds as administrative cost, but we didn't. Every cent that we had received has gone back into the community, and it continues to do that because the program continues to operate. Now, the use of the ARPA funding, it is with the intention of helping the most impacted people. However, it's difficult for any one person or any one organization to sit down and say who is the most impacted person or who are the most impacted people by what we've seen. What I would ask you to do is take a step backward and think about not just organizations, but think about not individual organizations, but all organizations, all social service organizations, because together we form a safety net that supports all community members in Lower Marion Township in a whole lot of different ways. You've heard people from, that support Neighbors Helping Neighbors, they've come to support their cause. Palm Senior Center has had people come and support their cause. There are other organizations out there, and I beg you to please stop and think about supporting the community organizations that support the communities, because much like a house of cards, if one of us falls, you risk losing the entire system of social supports here in Lower Marion Township. Now, I will ask also, I believe that there is a gentleman, one of the business owners that we've worked with, he was supposed to be here tonight. I'm not certain that he is. However, I will ask, I do have one additional thing that I would like to add about the capital improvement project, if this is the appropriate time to do so. I would ask for your guidance on that.
Sure. Please, go ahead.
Okay. As a result of the pandemic, we at ElderNet have seen an increase in changing needs for the community, in the community. In response to that, we are looking at growing our programs. We are looking at adding new services, new programs, that are going to support the communities, the community in different ways. In order to do that and do it successfully, we are expanding our staff structure to support the new workload. In our current facilities, which is generously donated through Lower Marion Township, the Bryn Mawr Community Center, we are running the risk of outgrowing that site because we are staffing structures increasing. What we have asked for through our request for the capital improvements at the building will allow us to continue to use that building, to continue to be a presence in Bryn Mawr, being able to use the parking in the library to support the older adults who come to us looking for assistance. I would plea, I would very much like you to reconsider the capital improvement requests that we have made. I know that you are waiting on the staff to make their recommendations. Whenever they are made, I ask you to genuinely consider those because without those, we run the risk of not being able to keep all of our staff in the same building in the community and run the risk of needing to find space elsewhere, which is something we don't want to do. So in closing, again, I ask you to please consider our capital improvement request, and please consider the requests coming from all community organizations seeking support so that we do not lose any one organization and that we can all continue to function as a safety net to support all of our community members. Thank you.
We also received four emails, or three emails and a phone call that I'll quickly summarize. First is from Karen Dash about pickleball, that there are none in our community, and there is a need for that as well. There was a phone call from Ruth Johnson of Seasons Catering expressing support for funding meal services. She provided and delivered meals for St. Mary's Food Pantry and Neighbors Helping Neighbors, giving her an opportunity for her business to keep going in the midst of the pandemic. There was one from a Jane Murray of Ardmore. Consider funding the following: increased staff for parks and rec. Our trails are in need of attention. Two is invasive plants. Trees throughout the township are struggling with invasives. Township staff increasing the minimum wage to $15 an hour. Another, an additional zoning officer. Prioritize affordable housing. Money to address food insecurity. And a part-time volunteer coordinator and part-time economic development staff person. And the fourth is from Alex Tavanger of Villanova. Supporting Neighbors Helping Neighbors as well to help for all the reasons that we've heard earlier as well. So those were the additional public comments we've heard. With all that said, I'd like to now open it up to the board for comments, responses to public comment, and any questions as well. So Commissioner O'Neill.
Oh, thank you, Vice President Gavin, and thank you, everybody, for the comments, particularly as they pertain to CARES Act funding versus the ARP funding. They are totally different programs. We do have some unused funds as a part of the CARES Act funding and staff, along with the other Grants Committee members. That includes Commissioner Stephen, Commissioner, oh my gosh, Anna Durbin, and I serve on that committee. We're meeting with Emily Crane, who's our Community Development Officer the week after Thanksgiving, to address the possibility of reallocating some of those unused funds in CARES Act for a variety of other community-based needs. There's many ideas. Many have been discussed this evening and incredibly valid ways to reallocate. And I just wanted to emphasize that, you know, that is a separate mission, that is a separate, separate federal requirement, separate funding pools, totally separate different administration processes to get it back to CDBG and HUD. So I just want to keep that in mind, that I think maybe there's a nomenclature issue that we're, this is all so new. And I just want to make it super clear that CARES Act funding is one thing, that is service to people. The ARP funding is a totally different animal, that I think that our Finance Committee has done a really fair and equitable job to meet the needs of the community and the region, not just Lower Marion Township. And I know that others will speak more to that, so I won't get into that, but just be assured that I am, as Chair of Grants, am working with staff to improve and elongate some of the funding opportunities through the CARES Act. So, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. Any other comments? Commissioner Kramer.
Representatives of different organizations who spoke today about the needs of our community. I have great respect for my colleagues on the Finance Committee and how I know how hard they work to organize and review the many suggestions for ways to spend the American Rescue Plan Act funds that we have received. Their recommendation reflects one of many views of how we should spend these funds. However, I have strong philosophical differences about a vision for our community. Lower Marion Township is not just buildings and public spaces. It is over 63,000 people, many of whom have suffered significantly due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and many of whom were struggling even before the pandemic. While first-rate facilities are important, so are the people and their basic and immediate needs: food, shelter, easy access to medical care, the ability to socialize safely during this difficult time, and relieve the isolation of the last year and a half. I agree that all of the proposals suggested by the Finance Committee are worthy projects that we should undertake. Many of them are already budgeted and planned for in our capital improvement plan because we have known for years that they are needed. We can borrow money at very favorable rates for long-term capital projects and plan to do so before we receive the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Investing some of the money in capital projects makes sense because some of the funds compensate the township for economic losses during the pandemic, which we could have spent on these investments in our community. I disagree that we should do capital projects only to the exclusion of direct aid to our most vulnerable residents and businesses that have suffered the most during the pandemic. We need to strike a balance between the two, and the recommendations of the Finance Committee, in my opinion, do not strike an appropriate balance. To begin with, I disagree with the process used by the Board of Commissioners to solicit ideas for the use of our funds. I believe that there should be concerted outreach to our nonprofit partners to better understand how to serve the needs of our community. When that did not happen, I contacted a number of our nonprofits with which I have worked on food insecurity issues to hear what they thought they needed to serve our residents. At their requests, I submitted proposals requested by Palm, ElderNet, Neighbors Helping Neighbors, Union Fire Association, and the Affordable Housing Corporation, which they believed would significantly benefit their operations and the residents of our community. Shouldn't the leaders of these community groups know best what they need to serve our residents? The failure to recommend funding for the Restaurant Rescue Program proposed by Neighbors Helping Neighbors with assistance from ElderNet, which has run our very successful restaurant meals for food banks program, is particularly troublesome. About 10 or 11% of our public schoolchildren historically have received subsidized meals at schools. Our multiple food banks have served about 500 households on a regular basis, many with children and many multi-generational households. The county estimated two years ago that about 8% of our residents suffered from food insecurity, which is about 5,000 people, and we are only scratching the surface in providing aid to them. And that was before the needs grew substantially during the pandemic. Our restaurants have been hard-hit during the pandemic. Many of them have either closed or are just getting by, not thriving as they should. They may have a shortage of labor, but that may be because they cannot afford to pay more to people because businesses suffered. Restaurants have a lot of food waste, which could be harvested to benefit hungry people in our township. Paying restaurants for food that would otherwise be thrown out would help them survive this period and would also have sustainability benefits. Neighbors Helping Neighbors wants to hire low-income people who have been hurt by the pandemic to connect restaurant food that would otherwise be thrown out with food insecure people and our food banks. We can accomplish four major goals with the same dollars: helping businesses, tackling food insecurity, improving sustainability of our community, and creating employment for people hurt by the pandemic. Why should this win-win-win-win project not be funded? Even when considering capital projects, the current proposal neglects some of our needy residents. Our Finance Committee has proposed spending $1 million to create a state-of-the-art facility at Ashbridge House for one organization that provides services for seniors, and rebuilding a desperately needed Ardmore Avenue Community Center Palm. But not a penny to renovate the building that houses ElderNet, which serves many of our low-income seniors. Those poor elderly residents have to stand outside in the cold rain and snow, waiting to enter a tiny building to get needed food. The main building, which houses ElderNet offices, has known issues that require renovation. The main building, which houses ElderNet offices, has known issues that require renovation and is not configured to enable ElderNet to provide other services long-term. Where is the equity for all of our low-income seniors? In the pursuit of only capital projects that we should do anyhow, we risk losing our heart and soul, our empathy for our most vulnerable residents. Without that, the buildings will be nothing more than monuments to our lack of caring for our most vulnerable residents' immediate needs. Our Board needs a new vision for the future, one that maintains first-class facilities, does not defer needed maintenance and capital projects in pursuit of never raising taxes, eliminates the structural deficit between our income and expenses to provide long-term fiscal responsibility, cares for our most vulnerable residents, invests in improving our services and community, pays all of our township employees a living wage, and makes us leaders in sustainability initiatives. The ARP recommendations, CIP, and budget go partway in that direction, but fall short of what we can and should do. And that's why I will be supporting amendments to each to help improve our community.
Commissioner Grimes.
Thank you. I have a question, maybe to clarify, for, either could it be answered tonight or subsequently for, by our township staff. Look, I think all of us, I mean, I know all of us heard all of the comments tonight, and certainly the comments that Commissioner Kramer just made. And sitting here listening to it, I would have the impression that the township does not help any of these organizations that serve people. It is my understanding, frankly, from reading the material from the Finance Committee, that we do help with operating for ElderNet. We help with the Palm with operating funds, notwithstanding the other capital money that is in this proposal, and that there are other organizations, I mean, the fire companies, certainly we help. The restaurants get CARES Act funding indirectly through the township. And I guess, I'm not saying this as a statement to show that we're magnanimous and generous with all this, but I think it would be helpful to me and maybe others if there was a way to clarify whether we are already helping these organizations and/or if there's other sources of revenue available for some of these organizations. I think Commissioner O'Neill talked about that with the CARES Act, because I think it's important to know as we allocate the finite funds that we have. The other point that I would like to make is, look, everybody said very important and true things tonight, and I appreciate that people spoke from the heart. But there is also an implication that, that I got, that the ARP funding is not intended to help with, people talk about parks. The ARP funding is specifically addressed to helping parks, and not just parks in, in poor areas of our country, but in other areas, because one of the effects of, one of the things we found during the pandemic all over this country was that people needed places to safely recreate outside. And, and that our parks, we've just, our parks were, are, are valuable to all of our residents regardless of income, and they got particularly heavy use and need help. The Kenwood Trail deserves the funding that's been proposed for it. The Kenwood Trail is heavily used by everybody and will only increase as the city opens up the bridge, the Manny Young Bridge, full-time. Ashbridge Park is in the middle of a, of a, of a planning program that needs to continue. As my colleagues know, and I'll mention, I have asked that we reconsider put allocating some funding to evaluate all the, our township park trails to see which ones need to be fixed, because many of them are in unsafe condition, particularly after the pandemic. And then that we consider allocating money for Rolling Hill Park in particular, which saw particularly heavy use during the pandemic, and that'll be a discussion for the, for a later time. But, but the point here is, I think it's important to clarify if there, what pockets of money are available for some of these nonprofits that have been discussed tonight, if in fact there is other money available, and also to clarify that we have limited resources and are trying, we are making, are proposing to make substantial amounts available to some of the organizations for capital programs and are trying to really have the best bang for our buck here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I should say, I don't know if anyone, if we have a response to any of what I said tonight. I don't want to put anyone on the spot. We could, but it'd be helpful to have in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Grimes. Any other?
I guess not.
I see no, no response. Commissioner Zella.
Thanks to the many members of the public with their comments tonight, picking up on what Commissioner Grimes said. There are ongoing, regular, frequent payments, contributions in the budget through the CDBG, which is federal money that flows through the township for programs that support a safety net in this township. We got more from the CARES Act, and we heard a moment ago about the planned reallocation, which is scheduled for December 8th in this room. There were unused funds from the CARES Act for the Forgivable Loan Program for businesses that the township set up that can help Viva Video with its structural issue, if that's the case. Up until recently, meaning within a week or so ago, was reported to us that there were homeowner assistance funds unused for rent assistance and mortgage assistance for those in this township who were impacted by COVID. That had, that, those programs have been promoted frequently by commissioners, by the township, and our manager believes that the recent, another round of recent promotion did lead to what is now, the homeowner assistance funds are almost depleted, but there are other, as I said, the forgivable loan program funds. I believe it's the intent to reallocate some of those for homeowner assistance. And as everybody knows, there's been support available for businesses from every level of government: county, state, federal. Everybody knows what the PPP is. The firehouses in this township receive $300,000 plus every year, and every year it goes up, that the township contributes to their operations. Some are doing better than others in terms of their finances. We now have good information on that. The, something that has to be sort of explained or clarified, in the memo that Commissioner, Vice President Gavron described to us at the beginning of this agenda item, he identified four recommended additions to the Capital Improvement Plan. That's really, well, it's not a recommendation to use ARP funds. So there's no recommendation to use ARP funds for the Kenwood Trail and any of those three expensive proposed projects to be funded by ARP. So we got input from many, many sources, and we went through them. The source of the input was not identified. We went through them and said, well, some of these make sense to recommend to go into the capital plan, the six-year capital plan, not necessarily 2022, but the plan will go out through 2027. So we thought these trail improvements made sense. Probably more typically funded through borrowing, through our, which is how we, we fund a lot of our capital plan. So there, that's separate and distinct from the proposed allocation of ARP funds. I understand they're in the same memo, but there was a, so the, the ARP fund allocation that's recommended is on page seven. Am I, am I, I think that I'm gonna go to the other memo. It's on page two of the memo that's in the packet. And those are the ones that Vice President Gavron described. So there is a suggestion that somehow Ashbridge House is somehow being favored over the Bryn Maw Community Center. Simply not true. We have a process. We've always had a process. When you spend money on capital improvements, public money, we go through a process. It's hard to spend money, it's hard to spend money quickly to improve your house. It's a lot harder to spend money on public buildings. We plan, we talk about it in public, we debate, we have a calendar for capital improvements. We have a workshop in June, we have this budget process now. So in June, this was, making improvements to the Bryn Maw Community Center was discussed. The township engineer does a analysis of the building. ElderNet expressed their needs and wishes. Township engineer produced a series of options, proposals, and costs, and that's being looked at by our staff now. So that process didn't start two years ago, it started six months ago. Improvements to Ashbridge House have been looked at, analyzed, proposed. Grants have been sought for four or five years. So we don't do all buildings at one time. We have plans for our parks, we have plans for our buildings, and they're, they're spread out so that our management team can manage effectively, just like we did when we improved all our libraries. We did it over eight years so that we could do it well. So the ARP money can be used for government operations, can be used for certain capital projects, and it can be used for nonprofits. And I think there's one other category. So there's many ways that the money can be used, and the Finance Committee met over a series of meetings with a lot of input, and we made our recommendations. Thank you.
Commissioner Zella. Commissioner McCombs.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Gavron. I'm gonna be brief because I, I think we've had a lot of discussion about this. We've heard, I mean, this is a process, and we have listened to what has been said, but in talking about the process, I think it's worth pointing out that nothing's been decided. We've made recommendations, but we haven't, this whole process hasn't taken place in some dark room. I mean, the ARP money has been out there, it's on the website. I would be surprised if any commissioner did not disclose that or talk about that with their constituents or invite, you know, suggestions for how it should be spent. And again, you know, I, I know that many of these suggestions are heartfelt, but if one person said that the money should not be spent on the Kenwood Trail, it should be spent on ma, making City Avenue more pedestrian-friendly, well, you know, if, if you look at it, there's a special services district on City Avenue, I sit on the board, that's a state highway. So that's, that, that pedestrian safety on City Avenue is very important, but that's not, that's not really an appropriate subject for ARP money. Pedestrian safety, it's great, but there are, we're trying to work within the framework of the ARP. And, and I, as I said, we've made our recommendations, I think the recommendations make sense, but the process is ongoing. That's why we're, we're hearing people tonight, and, and we'll, we'll follow through. So I thank everybody for their comments. Next.
Thank you, Commissioner McCombs. Any other comments online? Commissioner Churchill.
Thank you. I could say a number of things.
I just have a question. We're supposed to have a report on the Palm and our Community Center, and I thought it was going to be ready this fall. It could, any commissioner give me an update on when to expect this report and recommendation?
Mr. Churchill, I can speak to that.
Go for it. Commissioner Stevenson.
Mr. Churchill, Commissioner Churchill, thank you for bringing that up. We, there's a feasibility study that went forth, and I would like to say that our Chairman of Parks, Director, Chairman O'Neill, we are discussing to bring it forth to, to the Committee, and that we'll be bringing it forth to have a outline of what the feasibility study was outlined, and I, I anticipate that will be in January, but I will defer to Chairman O'Neill to affirm that or update that further.
Thank you. Yes, you can affirm that. That's about the right timing, as I understand. We're well on our way. We've got some great data. We had a wonderful event a couple weeks ago where we got some fabulous feedback from residents, and there are suggestions on boards, and you can see renderings online. There's a variety of way to, ways to get your feedback on what you might like within the buildings or the renovations and what the necessary components are for these buildings. And of course, the three of us and anybody on Parks and Rec can answer questions, as many as you have, but yes, the timing is absolutely right. What Commissioner Stevenson said, probably in January, we'll be prepared to come back with a presentation to the Parks and Rec Committee by our staff and the architects who've worked on the feasibility study, but it's been a very good process. Yeah, thank you for mentioning that question.
May I make a, a comment about that?
The floor is still yours, Commissioner Churchill.
The point that I would make is, it's, I think the Palm and the Community Center is at the top of our priorities, and we can't make a decision on those until this report comes on, you know, I'm anxiously waiting to see how much money this, these projects are going to cost. And I would just share with our neighbors that democracy moves slowly because it's going to be hard to allocate certain funds when we don't know what we're going to be recommending for the Palm and Ardmore Center. For example, I don't know if it's worthwhile to renovate the Palm and the Community Center at the same time. I'm waiting for a recommendation. That can affect how we address some of our funds. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Churchill. And, and I think that's a really important point that you bring.
These are allocations of funds, not necessarily that they will be spent. And if, if, for example, we change the Ardmore Community Center and Palm where the entire project costs $4 million, then that money can get reallocated and we can redo, I mean, that would be a miracle, but that would be reallocated and in the 20, with the 2022 budget. So I think, I think that is an important point to, to bring up. Any other commissioner comments? I, I have a couple of comments, I guess, I guess I'll make now, and, and, you know, I, I think it's important, when we, when we went through this, this process as a Finance Committee to come up with a recommendation, the idea on the capital projects are not, these aren't monuments to the commissioners, these aren't useless buildings, these are projects that truly have an impact on those, as we heard tonight, that are truly and have been impacted by COVID, and those that, that really have strong needs within our community. We've heard it from all of the organizations, and, and the, the comments tonight are very well-taken, that they don't help people immediately. These are not monies that help people right now, but they do, they are projects that are intended to truly help people. And whether it's the Palm and the, the Community Center, whether it's Ashbridge House for New Horizons, whether it's the fire apparatus for our volunteer fire companies, these are all very important projects for those. these are all very important projects for those who, who need it within our community. We have been, as we've heard before, we have been allocating funding through CARES Act, through CDBG for those organizations that have needed it. I know, you know, we've heard a lot from neighbors helping neighbors and who've done wonderful work by all accounts, and thank you for all the work you've done. And we have funded, you know, $35,000 and then an additional almost $40,000 towards the Restaurant Rescue Program. There has been funding, and is there need for more money, potentially? And I think that's where, you know, we've talked about the CARES Act and reallocating CARES Act funds and looking at the remaining money that hasn't been spent for these organizations, looking at, you know, how can those best be used to help out those in immediate need? I mean, there's in the six figures of dollars that still haven't been spent that we received, you know, a year and a half ago. And we still have, you know, 15% to 20% of it still, still in our budget that hasn't been spent or allocated. And we heard from ElderNet how every penny coming in has gone back out. And that's truly important in, in helping those in the community. And I think our staff is working on, you know, reallocating that funny and that, those funds and making sure that gets out to those who are in need and that every penny that, that, you know, is allocated can get out to those in need in the community. And I just want to reiterate how, how important it is that these recommendations, again, are not, are not just, they're not vanity projects, they're not projects that help the, those that aren't in need. These are projects that truly are intended to, to help those in need. And I wanted to kind of ask our township manager, because we did have discussions with him, on what is the impact of taking this money? Because we've heard, oh, the money's already allocated in the CIP. You know, it should be done anyway. And wanted to kind of ask him to, to share publicly what he shared with the committee on how having this money allocated from ARP can have an impact on these projects, you know, within, within the confines of moving them forward.
Sure, Commissioner. As I've explained, when you, the board allocates money for a project, that means it can proceed. We have a capital improvement budget, but the real money in that budget is only the one year. It's, it's that year you're in, in the current year. So say we did the, the study, the feasibility study we're doing right now for the, for the community center and the Palm. You've allocated $50,000 or so to do the study. We complete the study and, and we, we know what we want to do. We have no money for that project to proceed in that given year unless you actually budgeted dollars. So what happens with, when you do allocate money, like ARP money, to a project like this? It can keep going. You don't have to stop and wait for the next budget year to, to actually allocate funds. You've allocated money that allows it to proceed right from feasibility study into architectural services, and then right from architectural services and design into bidding and construction. So you keep a project moving. That's the difference.
Great, thank you. And I know from talking with leadership at New Horizons, you know, the, they are in desperate need of, of a new home, of a permanent home. The issue is, is funding it, and how are we going to fund it? By having this allocation for them, that's going to really allow that, that process, which has already been multiple years, and they are struggling every day with a temporary home at Norbert Borough Hall. It's going to allow that quickly to move forward and, and get them into a permanent home and serve those seniors that, that they currently serve. So, so these projects aren't, you know, they are important projects, and I want to stress that that's why the Finance Committee picked these particular projects. And there is CARES money still available to, for some of those immediate needs. And I know, you know, as we've said, staff is going to continue working on reallocating those funds. So those, those are my comments. Any other comments before we close the Finance Committee? I believe, Commissioner Durbin, sorry about that. Keep forgetting to look up at the screen.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted successfully. Um, I, I think that, um, you know, we very much all appreciate the hard work the Finance Subcommittee did reviewing the massive number of proposals that came in. But, you know, I think the, the things you're hearing tonight is because maybe there was insufficient outreach to the community to hear what the residency is the perceived needs. And there wasn't enough time for all members of the Board of Commissioners to, to really weigh in on setting priorities. And I, I'm hoping that we can, you know, take what we've heard tonight and, and look at those priorities. We're in a, you, an unprecedented position, you know, to fund necessary programs that haven't previously been funded. And I am absolutely delighted that, to support funding for the long overdue replacement of the Ardmore Avenue Community Center in the Palm, Positive Aging in La Rame, but those buildings, again, as we know, will not be immediately available to the residents. And so we need to do at least some short-term funding to help people who are in immediate need now. And so I think people were reacting when the committee recommended that there should be no money given to outside organizations, and there should only be money spent on capital projects. And that, I think, is not my understanding of the priorities of the AR, of the American Rescue Plan. So I think what we're hearing from people tonight is that we, we have projects that need funding that have, you know, yes, gotten some CBGB funds, which have been spent, but they need more to keep meeting the needs of people who are otherwise, I think, sometimes invisible to the rest of us. I, I have a letter that I shared with you from Joanna Hawkins, who, you know, has been delivering food in Bryn Mawr and Gladwin, and helping people with children's issues and family issues and educational issues. And that she's seen the impact of what the Neighbors Helping Neighbors Program has been to give these families hope and, and help their children. And so, you know, you have proposals from people that, you know, I think your parameters didn't, didn't sufficiently meet. And so I'm, I'm hoping that this meeting tonight will, will help us look at those again. I think it was unfortunate to call them outside organizations because they are organizations of people in this township. And they use volunteers of people in this township, and they serve people in this township. They are part of our township. And I'm hoping that we can support them as well as some of the capital projects that you all have identified. Others of them, I think, you know, again, there was some misunderstanding of what you were talking about in terms of the capital improvement program and what you were talking about in terms separately of the American Rescue Plan. But, you know, again, some of the things you picked, I think we have traditionally funded in the CIP, and we don't need to take ARP money for them. But these immediate needs of people who are struggling because of the pandemic, we do need to use some of that ARP money for them. And I'm really hoping that we can, you know, come to consensus on that when we, you know, deal with our, our budget issues. And thank you so much, everybody, for caring so much. I'm really glad that we heard from a lot of people tonight. I'm glad that commissioners have been able to hear what, what people in the community are thinking as well. Thank you.
Any other comments? I think we've heard from pretty much everyone. I don't see anybody. Still don't see anybody. Commissioner Stevenson.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for acknowledging me. I would just, I will be very brief in saying that I would echo what Commissioner Durbin said. You know, we have, in our, in our community, we have a food security issue that we need to address. And I think this, this ARP funding is a part of that addressing. And I hope, and next week when we have discussion, if we will robustly listen to this proposal to move forward, but how we best do that. So, and because I have a 45-minute speech, but because it is 11 o'clock, I will make it a four-minute speech to say that I would hope that next week we would, my colleagues would be at, open to having this conversation. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevenson. On that note, I believe we are done with this discussion and also done with the business of the Finance Committee, but not done with the evening.
Well, thank you very much, Vice President Gavin. And I do want to thank all the people that waited this time to come voice your opinions. I just want to make sure that all of you understand, and I think you do get, get it, even though some may have made, you know, question whether we're putting our head down, and I tell you that's to take notes or to look up some financial statements that people have submitted, that this group pays a lot of attention to what goes on. We have this public process for just this reason. We get to learn from, from people who come forth. And even before this evening took place, so were those who even questioned about outreach, all of the commissioners here have their own separate email lists out to their immediate constituents, and they get a lot of feedback. And a lot of that was already put into the process. But we continue this because there's no, you know, immediate litmus test which gives us, you know, the direct answer. And we will continue to do this, and we will continue to listen. And the only point I want to make is, please don't underestimate that. Everybody here truly comes forth and tries to do their best. And doing their best means they listen wholeheartedly to everything that's presented. With that, I saw some people who looked like they were about to get up and go because we still have a Board of Commissioners meeting, which we get to start at 11:02. So I am going to ask, call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order and ask everybody to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And to stretch your legs.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, would you do the honors of calling the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Churchill.
President.
Mr. Corbin.
President.
Ms. Durbin. Here, Mr. Gavin.
President.
Mr. Drummond.
Here.
Ms. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. McHoe.
Here.
Mr. McCann.
Here.
Ms. O'Neill.
Here.
Mr. Sinai.
Still here.
Mr. Seadis. Mr. Whalen.
Here.
Mr. Zello.
Here.
Mr. Bernheim.
Present.
Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Excellent. All right, our first order of business is to approve the minutes of our meeting, which was held on October 20th, 20, 2021, as distributed. Very good, all those in favors, opposed, seeing none, so forth, they pass. Also, a couple of announcements. We did meet in executive session earlier this evening. Had to discuss a couple of litigation matters, some personnel matters, some items with the school district, items regarding coronavirus and 1400 Mill Creek Road. Also, just in case you are unaware, Thursday, November 25th, is Thanksgiving. It is a legal holiday, and the township building and libraries are closed for business, and there is no refuse or recycling on that day. There will be a second public hearing on the 2022 budget and proposed capital improvement plan on Wednesday, December 1st, at approximately 6:00 PM. And hopefully, we're still not here by that time. So also, I would like to make mention, earlier today, there was an award ceremony here for employees of our township who have served 10 years, 20 years, 30 years and 40 years. It is a quite impressive list. Almost 60 individuals fell within that category. And that does say something about our township and also to our fortunate, that we are fortunate of the people who serve here and, and work for the township. So I would read all those names, but at 11:05, I'll opt not to, and just merely say thank you to all of them for their service and for all of their dedication to us. That brings us to the next section of our meeting, which is known as public privilege of the floor. This is the opportunity for people to address the board on non-agenda items which fall within our jurisdiction. And we would ask, if there's anyone who would like to do so, please come forward to the podium. And we are going to try to limit to three minutes. So if you, please introduce yourself and tell us.
Thank you, Marilla and Heather. This is Commissioner Corbin. His frequent request that constituents hold you all accountable. So I'd like to ask for your attention to a couple of items. I want to preface my requests, however, with a sincere thanks for what you do and how you do it. It's incredibly challenging leading this very complex community, and I am heartened to see the level of commitment and concern regularly expressed by this body. I thank you, and my thanks are overdue. Having said that, however, I think you can do more and do better. First, representing constituents should improve. You need to inform us, not just hear from us, and you need to hear from more of us. Too many times, I hear you say that you've heard from your constituents and that you need to vote as you've indicated, as they've indicated you should. But it is also your responsibility to inform your constituents. You attend far more meetings than we do, even those of us who regularly watch Channel 7 and the LMTV. Please help us to understand the issues. And when you say you've heard from constituents, that can't just be four emails from the loudest voices. Please make a stronger effort to engage with your constituents as broadly as possible. You can't just send an email newsletter. One and done doesn't do it. You have to tap folks two and three times to get their attention. Engaging with the civic associations is helpful, but the civics do not fully represent the communities and should not be used as proxies by commissioners, by staff, nor by developers. The degree to which community participates in each civic varies significantly. Further, those who do get involved in civic associations are often those with very strongly held opinions. And the Federation, while very valuable, can often sound like the most opinionated of the opinionated. The civic associations may also be comprised of retirees like me who have the time to get involved. That may sometimes mean we're a little more informed, but it does not mean that our opinions are more important. Please reach out to those of your other constituents whose voices are not as loud, who may be busy trying to manage a young household or a business or a busy travel schedule. When constituents do speak up at a meeting here, as I'm so glad so many people spoke up tonight, please listen to us. Don't look at your notes and don't anticipate your response. Remember that we only have three minutes. We don't get to respond to any comments you may make after we're done. If there's a chance you didn't hear us accurately, please invite clarification rather than assuming our intent and running over us to make your own point. This time at the beginning of the meeting is not just the public privilege of the floor, sir, it is our public responsibility. If we're to take our responsibility for our own duty to speak up seriously, we need to take, you need to be accountable for hearing us. There are two issues I think need your attention very soon. These were areas of concern that were repeatedly tabled during the zoning rewrite, affordability and historic. I understand the timeline for the Salvo, but the affordability issue needs a holistic and creative review, and it needs it soon. We have too many people who work in this township who cannot afford to live here, and it's in danger of getting a lot worse very quickly. And those of us who live in historic districts, including those of us who purchased those homes in order to be affordable, still waiting for the historic design guidelines that were drafted nearly three years ago. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to take advantage of public privilege or public responsibility?
Hi, very briefly, Manera Walker, Neighbors Helping Neighbors on Main Line 131 Walnut Avenue, Ardmore.
Can you just speak a little louder, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm a little worn at this point. Manera Walker, Neighbors Helping Neighbors on the Main Line 131 Walnut Avenue, Ardmore. She raised a very good point, and that's that after we walk away from the microphone, things may be said that need to be addressed, and we have no more time to do that. So I'd just like to say very quickly, I'd like to correct, and especially for the public that's been viewing these meetings and hearing things that I haven't been able to respond to. The two corrections I'd like to make is for this week, Commissioner Gavin quoted amounts that- I'd like to make is for this week, Commissioner Gavin quoted amounts that Neighbors Helping Neighbors received, which were not accurate. We did receive thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars in C B D G funds that were left over, which I described aptly in my comments that I made earlier. We did not receive forty thousand dollars or any other amounts of money. We received the one-time funding. So I just want to be very clear about that. And as Commissioner Durbin said, of course, that money went very quickly, six months' space and three months at half salary for three people. So when you consider all that coming out of thirty-four five, I think we did a major job with that amount of money. But that is the only money we were allocated. And just to make a correction from last week, I know you all did get our, a copy of our application for the funding that we had applied for. It was mistakenly said last week that we did not apply, but we did. So I'm glad that that was cleaned up and clarified as well.
I'm sorry, Ms. Walker.
Thank you.
Can you speak up? I'm still having difficulty hearing.
You still can't hear me? Okay, so the, so the, the end result of what I'm trying to say is two corrections. One from tonight was that Neighbors Helping Neighbors received funding once from C B D G. It was for amount of thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars. We did not receive a subsequent or at any other time forty thousand dollars or even one dollar of funding from any other, you know, pot. Also, last week, there was a misrepresentation of an app, or someone couldn't find an application that we made or something. And I just want to make it clear to the public that we did actually make that application. I think you, it's been provided to you now at this point. But sometimes these things don't get said, and I think that those are two things that may make people think a little differently about Neighbors Helping Neighbors if they don't know that, yes, we do make our applications, and we only got funding the one time, which we greatly appreciate. And I think that I was very expressive of that in my conversation earlier. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else who would like to take advantage of public privilege of the floor, please?
Hello, Adrian Seltzer, Winwood, again. I would like to comment on the procedure that you have for people to be able to observe the meetings. You have to go and let Jody know before noon on the day of the meeting that you would like to get a link to view on Zoom, so you could make a comment. And I think that that is totally unnecessary. Your I T department has led you astray. There are marked amounts of security updates that Zoom has done. I have checked with a security expert who does the, who is the I T person for a company with eighty thousand people in a hundred countries. And when I told her how you were doing it, and what I was told on you were so worried about security for Zoom, she called.
You heard things.
She said that it was not accurate. I have cleaned that up. And I think that you can have people sign up and pre-register. You get their, their email address. You can even ask them questions. You can ask them where they live. And there is no reason that Jody has to be put in a position of doing all this busy work. It is a marked unused, an inefficient use of her time. And it also is very hard for somebody who's really busy to remember, oh, I've got to get this in. I've got to get this in before noon. And a lot of times, you find stuff out, and it's afternoon, and so, you know, you're stuck with coming here. And a lot of people can't do it. They don't have the time that I have. I'm retired. And I think you should check with your I T department. And when I spoke with Mr. McNeeley, he said it's up to you guys. All right? And then from you guys, I hear, well, it's up to Mr. McNeeley. Please, you can call Zoom, and you can ask them. This is something that does not have to, this, someone can come the last minute and sign up for one of these things, and your security is not going to be threatened. You have waiting rooms. You have passwords. Come on, guys. You know, you're working with information that's over eighteen months old.
Anybody else who would like to take advantage of public privilege of the floor, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. Isabel Melvin, Winwood, Pennsylvania. I'm here on behalf of COM. I'm a member of COM Climate Action Lower Marion. And I am here to request that you give some things some attention. And they are: allocate money in the budget right now to implement long-term green infrastructure and storm water management as outlined in the two thousand sixteen Lower Marion Township Comprehensive Plan. Hire an experienced land steward or a green coordinator, same thing, different names. Hire a volunteer coordinator as outlined in our two sixteen, two thousand sixteen Lower Marion Township Comprehensive Plan. Pay these employees a competitive salary. The Lower Marion Township land steward and volunteer coordinator would transition our park maintenance crews to use sustainable practices on managing our parks and other township properties. And I put in parentheses sub-things: storm water management, combating invasives, ban leaf blowers, leave the leaves, planting of meadows, rain gardens, and pollinator gardens. You all know this stuff. I'm sorry. I'm just gonna repeat it, okay? The Lower Marion land steward and volunteer coordinator would write a landscape stewardship manual to be given to homeowners and included in our new resident packet, which will include education about the wildlife and natural land communities we support. And again, combat the invasives, ban leaf blowers, leave the leaves, turn out the lights, plant meadows, rain gardens, pollinator gardens, storm water management. And this one I mentioned earlier, and I understand that City Line Avenue is a state road. However, I think that the township does get involved with that decision. So I request that our township get involved with, take more action on Lower Marion Township's Besides the C H T, improve pedestrian and bicycle opportunities in the business districts along Montgomery Avenue and Penn Valley, Lancaster Avenue, which I use all the time, and I told you it's difficult, and our side of City Avenue, especially in underserved communities who depend on walking to public transportation and biking. We can do better in those areas as outlined, outlined in the two thousand sixteen Lower Marion Township Comprehensive Plan. And let, oh, okay, I'm done. All right. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much, Ms. Melvin. Appreciate that. Anybody else who would like to speak at public privilege of the floor? Do we have anyone online?
Uh, we do.
We do?
Uh, Ms. Sean McMurtry.
Okay.
Good evening. We should stop meeting like this. I have spent, I'm Sean McMurtry, Marion Station, and I have spent countless hours combing through some pretty impressive comprehensive plans that Lower Marion Township has. Really, really good detail in the Open Space Plan, which is now the Greater and Greener Plan, and the two thousand sixteen, the Greater and Greener Plan from two thousand twelve, which goes into two thousand twenty-one, and the two thousand sixteen Comprehensive Plan. And there is also an E A C two thousand eighteen suggestion memo, something. And there is a common theme throughout all of these very impressive thorough plans, and that is, we need to protect the natural resources that we have been gifted in Lower Marion Township. Given the summer that we just came through, where it's pretty obvious, it's darn clear, Lower Marion Township is no longer immune to climate change. It's not a southwest thing. It's not a west coast thing. It's here. What's great is that all of the answers that, for what we can do, are laid out in those plans. And I would like to call your attention to some things that I think are absolutely imperative for this year's budget, which is, Isabel just said it, Gilda Kramer said it, Hannah's been talking about it, many of the commissioners have been talking about it, and that is to prioritize our people, our residents, and the environment with invasive control. We have countless acres of Lower Marion Township-owned land that needs to be restored before those invasives travel to and degrade neighbors' lands, neighbors' properties. And if you, every day that we don't tackle that, the problem snowballs and becomes more difficult and more costly to fix. And we need to prioritize storm water management through green infrastructure. We need to prioritize shade. So we're talking a lot about the Kenwood Heritage Trail. To me, that seems like a nice to have, those improvements, if they are not providing shade in the increasing heat that we are experiencing every summer, spring, and fall, and taking care of flooding that will continue to worsen, and, you know, landslides. It's all in the Pennsylvania Climate Action Plan, saying that over, you know, the next thirty years, we are going to experience an increase of six degrees on average. And we're already experiencing these, those extremes. So what are we doing? I don't, I can't talk about the heritage, Kenwood Heritage Trail anymore. If we are not talking about shade trees, heritage tree protection, you know, keeping people off the streets, keeping, keeping these organizations afloat who are taking care of our residents. I think that it's all in the plan. They're all laid out. Hire someone to oversee the Greater Greener Plan for the township, who is looking from the top down to say, we can't chop down those large trees. We can't afford to.
If you could start to wrap it up, that would be appreciated.
It's hard for me to do that, but thank you. I'm done.
Okay. We appreciate your enthusiasm. Was there any last word you had, or did I derail you?
No, 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 no. Someone needed to stop me. Thank you for doing that. Everyone's tired.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Anybody else who would then like to take advantage of public privilege? Do we have online Jody or?
Uh, yeah.
All right. Is there any members of the board who would like to respond to the comments that we heard at public, public privilege? Seeing some restraint, strain on the board, I'm just going to make note of just one quick item. The comments that were made about our communicating with people through emails and making sure that we are listening and getting information to, to and from. Just during that, I did look at emails, just the last three days, last three, averaged eighteen a day of responding to people with information, some within my ward, some outside of the ward. My guess is, to my right and left, is probably pretty similar. So we do keep in touch and try to do so. But your comments are well taken. That will bring us to the next.
Can I have a comment?
Commissioner Zella.
Thank you, President Bernheim. For the members of the public who have recommendations for goals and initiatives and ideas on what we do and how we do them, thank you very much. And they're always welcome. When the next step is taken to tell us who to hire and what positions to hire, that's not helpful, in my view. So I'm speaking right now.
Please, please do not. Appreciate that.
We have a manager form of government, the four hundred and ten full-time employees, other than the secretary, work for him. The manager works for us. And he knows their skills. He, they, he knows the structure of the organization. He knows what they can and can't do, where there's capacity, where there isn't. And so it's just, I'm making a suggestion that it's more productive for us to talk about ideas, goals, and initiatives, and not tell us who to hire. Maybe we hire temporary. Maybe we change someone's job function. Maybe we hire a consultant. Maybe we do nothing. But I'm making a suggestion. Sean, thank you for your many comments. You'll be pleased to know, I presume, already in the budget is significant money to deal with invasives. Has not been in our budget in many, many, many years. It's in the proposed budget. Thank you, President Bernheim.
Thank you, Commissioner Zell. You're not being presumptuous. Then anybody else who wants to respond to public privilege?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Churchill.
Real quick, we are in the third year of a five-year program to address storm water management. And hopefully, by two thousand twenty-three, it's going to become more robust. So for those people that are concerned about storm water management, we are spending over a million dollars a year on that currently, and more to come. Also, about trees, I think that there's a little bit of frustration. Every year, we allocate a hundred trees to be planted. There were a couple of years that we allocated more money to plant more trees. The problem was, we didn't have the manpower to do it. So I would look forward to any volunteers that want to help the township plant trees. I'm more than willing to allocate more money for that project. So, thank you. Bye.
Very much, Commissioner Churchill.
Can you just follow me on that about trees?
Six locations.
I'm sorry. I believe you're a manager of a, something.
I mean, Commissioner Zell wants me to point out that, that what has inhibited tree planting is the lack of homeowners who are willing to take a tree in front of their property. It's not a lack of manpower. It's a lack of homeowners willing to take the tree. But the fact is, also in the budget, the, in the draft budget, is additional money to do even more trees in two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. Thank you very much for that additional information. That's going to bring us to the next section of our meeting, which is public comment. This is the opportunity to address the board on agenda items. And at eleven twenty-eight, we are going to try to strictly adhere to that three-minute rule. So, yeah, no, 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 please, please, go right ahead.
Marianne Haverford, this comment is related to the consent calendar.
Specifically, the certificates of appropriateness, just to reinforce the idea of historic guidelines and standards that are consistently applied. I wish I had been able to attend the Building and Planning Committee last week when the items now listed were reviewed. I'm not here to disparage my neighbors in any way, but I am saddened to see the dramatic change in size and scope of the property at five sixty-five Barrett Avenue. That property is before you now to do even more than what was previously approved. My own next project will be to replace my porch with no changes to the roof line or any other dimension, but I will have to go before the Harb to beg permission to replace a handrail with a product that will be the same approximate dimensions, but not exactly the same profile as the current handrail. And I'm not looking forward to that discussion with the six architects who currently are in the Harb. My neighbor's home has gone from one of the few remaining small, two-bedroom, single-family homes that was available in our housing stock, to what will soon be one of the largest single-family homes on the block. But the fact that the handrail on my porch is not an exact match will take me six extra weeks for discussion and possible approval. To provide another example, the small business owner around the corner, the Nellie Berman School of Music, identified, we're all in the same historic district, Haverford Station Historic District. They identified an unused chimney was causing roof leaks. The historic commission viewed that chimney as iconic, and told the property they owned, or they had to keep it at significant cost, despite the fact that the next adjacent property is built in a similar style and a similar era, had already lost its chimney in a previous renovation. And the next property in line, also of a similar style from a similar era, had its chimney set far enough back on the roof that it's not really visible from the public right away. It's my opinion that context should have mattered more in that review, especially in our district, which is not simply the sum. our district, which is not simply the sum of historic resources, but is a historic, but is historic as a district for its sense of commonality and community. We need those actual guidelines, please, regarding what's required to maintain a historic resource, especially in historic districts, and I'm asking you, please, to have them consistently applied. My neighbors and I, and the historic commission, and the Harb, need those guidelines in clear, unambiguous language, published in an easy-to-use format, and that process, please, needs to move along. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else who would like to take advantage of time for public comment? Seeing none, anybody online, Jody? Okay. Anybody like to respond to Ms. Gallin's comment? Otherwise, we will address your concerns, I promise. And good luck with the guardrail. All right. That, that brings us then to the, the next section of our meeting, which is our consent calendar, and this is before I moved towards approval. Is there anybody who wishes to remove anything from the consent calendar? All right. Seeing none, then I will move for the approval of the consent calendar, including, let's see, we had items earlier from the finance committee. Correct? Yes. All right.
Just one item.
Yes, that's correct. One item. All right. With that, that addition.
Four hours.
Somebody seconded that. Thank you, Vice President Gavern. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand indicating your approval. Any objections? Seeing none, the consent calendar is duly adopted. That brings us to the next section of our meeting, which is a hearing on our budget. Hold one second, if you'd be so kind. This is a, our public hearing in reference to our 2022 budget and our 2022 to 2027 capital improvement program. I will open this hearing and ask Mr. Traub, if he'd be so kind, to make a brief presentation, operative word this evening being brief.
Thank you, President Bernheim, and indeed, I will be very brief. So just in case some of the public wasn't at the finance committee last week, I just have a selection that I am going to run through very briefly of slides, if the sharing screen works. So we're talking about the proposed 2022 budget. Again, I am going to be brief. You have the budget in front of you. It's a $71.6 million budget. There's no tax increase proposed in the budget. There's no change of solid waste fees, not anticipating any changes to sewer. In terms of where the money comes from, this is the classic revenue pie, half real estate taxes, and you can see the other distributions. In terms of changes in the budget, on a budget-to-budget basis, you can see that we have increases both in business taxes and real estate transfer taxes. We talked at length about what's been happening with those last week. Also, departmental earnings showing an increase there, especially in regards to recreation fees, which really rebounded quicker than we anticipated from the pandemic. On the flip side, parking is still down, which is fines and forfeits, and we talked about some of the reasons. I won't go into the minutia of interest rates and other things for other revenues. In terms of where the money goes in the proposed budget, you can see the, the kind of classic pie chart here, public safety leading the way, and then the representation of the other general fund functions. In terms of how that dollar gets split between personnel and other costs, debt service, you see that about 60, almost 67% is personnel-related costs in, in the proposed budget. In terms of quick comparison, budget-to-budget on expenditures, again, we talked about these at length last week. If anyone wants any recap of anything, be happy to give it, but otherwise, in the, given the hour, continue onward. Personnel changes, there's one proposed decrease from a full-time perspective, that's in Park and Recreation, a position that's been vacant maybe since before the pandemic. I think Dawn is here, she could clarify that. The budget includes wage increases per the collective borrowing agreements. There will need to be some board action on new, non-union staff before the budget is adopted. Employee benefits, generally good news, especially on the health insurance front, which is the biggest expense. We do have some estimated pension contributions and some modest increases in some other employee benefit categories. Debt is probably, is, not probably, is at its lowest level that it's been in many years, certainly since I've been giving these presentations to the board. We will be coming forward to the finance committee in December with a discussion around debt for next year. We probably will not be making any final decisions because you still have a budget to adopt. In terms of the capital improvement program, this is just a look at the top 10 CIP projects by all revenue sources, and then I did just add a slide, this is actually the only new slide that's in here. This shows all those top 10 CIP projects by just township-only sources. So you wouldn't be surprised to see the traffic network evaluation, which is kind of a catch-all for many different categories leading the way there. The updated general fund financial forecast shows that the 2022 budget can be adopted without an increase to the real estate tax. Obviously, we had some discussions about tax rates and changes at last week's meeting, and some of that has continued over the last week. So the board obviously can debate that, you know, tonight, and as we go through the rest of the budget process, as you wish. In terms of the forecast, this is just kind of the graph that shows you both where we've been and where we're at least projected to go. Obviously, as I spoke about last week, we've tended to outperform these forecasts, especially on the revenue side. Time will only tell whether or not we continue to do that. You know, we do budget conservatively in some ways, that's always served us well, but we also feel like that's the appropriate best practice for the township moving forward. Next steps, later tonight, we'll have to approve an advertisement for that proposed budget. Obviously, we've been talking about a lot of things tonight, we'll keep talking about them over the course of the next four weeks, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for, for Mr. Traub? Yes, Commissioner Zell.
A quick question, Eric. Thanks for the presentation. Can you send the board the new slide, please?
Any other questions for, for Mr. Traub at this time? All right. Since this is a, a public hearing, what we will do is open the floor to the public and ask if there's anybody here who wishes to, to make a comment regarding our budget. Seeing none, do we have anybody online? Jody?
Yeah.
Can't imagine why at 11:20.
11:40.
11:40, yeah, right. So there, there were a couple of written comments that we received, and I'm just gonna summarize them, and hopefully with their, their.
Mr. Gavern included them in the finance committee.
Ah, okay. Excellent. So we will not, we will, we will not repeat them. Are there any other members of the board who wish to make, make some comments or something in reference to the budget, recognizing we do have other hearings coming up? All right. Seeing none, that would actually officially then permit us to close this public hearing, noting there will be another, and I, I do apologize for the fact that we're doing it at this hour. I feel somewhat uncomfortable and guilty about that, but we had a number of items that we had to get through, and I think it was very important, all the topics that we covered in the finance committee, and since we will have other opportunities for public comment on, on the budget, as well as commissioners, you'll hopefully accept my apologies. That then brings us to our next item, which is the motion for the authorization to advertise the, the proposed budget. We did have some language change that, that was necessary in, in order to do this, just to clean that up. So the motion should read, will be as follows. A motion to authorize the Township Secretary to advertise notice of intent to adopt an ordinance of the Township of Lower Marion, imposing a levy for general revenue purposes on all taxable real estate in the township in the amount of 4.19 mils on each $1 of assessed valuation, adopting an annual budget and appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the purposes of the municipal government for the 2022 fiscal year and approving the 2022 through 2027 capital improvement program. You need a second on that? Thank you, Vice President Gavern. Is there any further discussion on this motion, which is authorizing the secretary to advertise? Yes, Commissioner Sinon.
Thank you, President Bernheim. You expected this. So, so I am going to, to make, make my attempt at the pitch, same pitch I made last year, I'll make it again this year, and, and I, I beg my colleagues, you know, forbearance for me for this. And, and I know everyone here knows it, but in case anyone's still awake, you, here's the situation we're in, right? We projected a $7.3 million deficit last year. We had nearly $11 million in honest-to-goodness, one-time revenue that we could not have expected, in transfer taxes from an epically unbelievable real estate year, and business taxes from an epically unbelievable business tax year, that we probably are not going to have recur, and we would have had a $4 to $5 million deficit in the absence of that. But, you know, in the background, we were trying to spend down our fund balance anyway, right? So we were trying to spend down our fund balance last year on purpose, and we got a windfall of money, so we're trying to empty the bathtub and then like, we're refilling it with a faucet at the same time, right? And, and the emptying is losing, and the, and the refilling is winning. So that's where we are. So, so the question is, what to do next year? And the proposal on the table is to try and empty the bathtub again, and I didn't support that last year, I don't support it this year, for a couple of reasons. And, and one is that the proposal is to empty it pretty fast, $6.5 million per year. We, we, we run out of our general fund and hit our limit pretty quickly when we do that. And, and I will, I will note that $6.5 million is, is Eric's conservative budgeting. I, I think of that as like a worst-case scenario, that we're $6.5 million deficit, right? Odds are that we're, we do a little better than that. But even so, like, like, we are spending more than we are receiving in taxes. We are not balancing our budget, and it's on purpose because we want to run down this fund balance. But, but it took a long time to build up that fund balance, and to say, we have this large fund balance that we kind of replenished, and what we're going to do with it is like, just give it to the people who happen to be taxpayers this year, strikes me as not the right way to do it. That what we should be doing is if it took a long time to build up, we should take a long time to run it down, right? That people in any given year should cover more of their costs. So we don't have people in the future having to pay higher taxes because we just kind of were really generous this year. Because remember, this upcoming year, we're projecting a $6.5 million deficit. We are spending, you know, that's, that's 10% of the budget that, that we are, we are not covering with, with our revenues. Equivalently, we could just take that surplus money and pay, use it to pay down debt, right? Our debt is declining balance. Most of it is repayment to principal. We're spending money, and we're repaying it over 10, 20, 30 years, and so you pay down the debt, right? And again, that's a way of taking this windfall and spreading it for lower taxes or more services for people in the future, rather than just, you know, giving it to, to, like, who, who should get that money? Should it just be the people this year? And what that means is that, you know, people just largely pay for their own costs, right? So, so you get closer to an operating budget balance, that you're not using, you know, a one-time windfall to covering, cover an operating deficit. That's just, you know, it, it, it strikes at the heart of my economist soul to, to not want to do that. Let's also recognize that that's a little more prudent, right? Like, having a budget that bakes in a $6.5 million deficit, right? It, you, is, 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 again, spending more than we're, than we're taking in. The other thing is, I think we should not surprise our residents. It's a 20% tax increase to, to try and close that gap. Now, having said that, we are 11% of our residents' tax bills, so a 20% tax increase is a 2.2% tax increase for our residents, right? So, so when that happens, it's a 2.2% tax increase, even so, it's, it's, it's real money. That 2.2% is real money, and we should telegraph to our residents that we are going to be on a slope of, of having to raise taxes over time, that, that they're predictable. We have a series of small increases instead of one big one. And our base is not going, we have, growing, we have to do this by increasing the, the military. And, and I know that some of my colleagues, I'm certain, look at what we have right now, which is a, a windfall in revenue, and say, it is, it is difficult to raise taxes in the face of that. We, we, we're kind of cash-rich at this point. But I think it's an issue of communication, right? I think we just have to tell our residents, look, you know, we got this windfall, but what is happening is on an operational basis, we are losing money every year, we need to close that gap, and we are going to spread this out over time, and we are going to have people, you know, you know, pay for what they eat as we go through this. And I think the alternative is another communication difficulty, which is raising taxes by 10% in a year, and trying to explain that at that point, which is also going to be difficult, right? Easier, I think, to explain, we are going on a path to fiscal sustainability, we do that at the tax rate increase of 3% per year, and we kind of close that gap, and we are running down the balance, fund balance, and closing the gap at the same time. I will note that the one line up there that kept going up was the expenditures line, which grew at 2.7%. So our target is ever-increasing, right? So with each year that passes, we need to raise more money because, because Eric's funding gap is getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And the future, the future is not very predictable, but that expenditure line seems pretty solid. So, so I, I do think we need to get on the ball. Anyway, thank you for your patience. At some point, President Bernheim, I'm going to like to make a motion. You can tell me when that's, when that's appropriate.
Well, let's see if we have any other comments, and then we'll let you make your motion. All right. Commissioner Zell.
Thank you, President Bernheim. So I see the world very differently from my new colleague to my right. I shouldn't say he's not my new colleague, but his position is new. We don't know that the business privilege tax is one-time. It was significant, but it may be significant in 2022. We simply don't know. We didn't know a year ago. We don't know today what it will be a year from now. As was properly noted, we have a conservative budget that we pretty much, the last many, many years, have outperformed, to great credit to the budgeting process and to a number of sources of one-time revenue, that has not really become one-time revenue, but become somewhat more predictable revenue. We can never thank our manager enough for the excellent work he did in the structuring of the health insurance program that is, that we have now available for our township We have taken a long time to try to decrease the fund balance. We've been trying and trying, and it keeps going up. Why would we pay down our low-cost debt? We, it's very low cost, and we always try to balance our fund balance from the general fund and the, and our debt. And at times, we transfer money from our fund balance to our capital fund, so that we borrow less. So that is a, that is a, that is a technique that we examine on a regular basis. But fundamentally, we don't kind of have a lot of cash. We have a lot of cash, $50 million in various funds, including the equipment fund that we talked about many, many hours ago. Why do we want to hold our taxpayers' money that we don't need today? The manager's proposal for no tax increase is what we should adopt. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zell. Anybody else? Yes, Vice President Gavern.
Thank you, President Bernheim. Earlier tonight, I said, when a, when a Wharton economics professor talks, I, I listen, and I always do. But one thing he said, I will, I guess, quibble with a little bit. There was a comment, we are losing money every year and need to close that structural deficit. If that were the case, I would 100% agree. And I, as I look at this graph with the line of the expense going up, I look at our revenue line, the, in 2016, the revenue was under- In 2016, the revenue was under the expenses. 2017, it was over. 2018, it was spot-on. 2019, it was over. 2020, it was under. 2021, it was over. We are not losing money every year. This series, you know, I struggle with, every year, we have one-time, we have one-time revenue gains that we don't expect. I think it's part of the way we budget. We can't budget for it. It is one-time, but every year, there seems to be, to some degree, something that is, quote, "a one-time revenue." And I think one thing, we're lucky, as a township, 100% or close to 100% of our revenue doesn't come through property taxes. We have other sources of revenue, and typically, those sources are making up a lot of, you know, any kind of a structural deficit in ways that are really unplanned. And that's lucky because we do diversify our revenue streams, and we are not losing money every year. We are continuing to grow this fund balance, and I can't see how we need to raise taxes on our residents when we're not losing money every year and we're maintaining this budget, although it looks every year like we have a structural deficit. The reality, at least over the last five years, and I believe longer than that, is we don't. And we are sometimes up, sometimes down, but pretty much on point over the long haul. And, you know, if we decide as a whole, kind of overall, that our process should change and we should be spending more money, and we should add services and add people and add more, then it makes sense, in my mind, to increase taxes. But as long as our budget looks like it does, and this year, if we're relatively in that budget with minor amendments, I can't see a need to increase taxes. I'll leave it at that.
Commissioner Kramer.
I have a slightly different vision about what we should be doing when we have an unusually good year. This ARP process has been quite interesting because, you know, we've all seen dozens of proposals about things that we can do to improve our community. We can do more stormwater. We can do more about maintaining our parks. We can do more in sustainability. We can do more on sidewalks. We can invest in our part-time employees. We can do, provide increased aid to our nonprofits instead of capping that amount at $120,000 and including only $93,000 in this year's budget. When we have excess money from an unusually good year, instead of using it to close a gap in our budget, we should be using that money to invest in our community. And I feel like fiscal responsibility means sometimes making hard decisions, decisions that aren't popular, because nobody wants a tax increase, but that will eliminate the structural deficit so that we will be on an even keel and financially sound for many years to come.
Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. Commissioner Courtney.
Thank you, President Bernheim. I hear no up here a lot. Now, I expect to hear no sometimes, but I don't expect to hear no as frequently as I do. Tonight, I hear no on nonprofit funding. I heard no on $15 minimum wage. Over the course of my tenure here, which is admittedly brief, we have a growing backlog of legislation that we want to write, ordinances that our building and planning department hasn't gotten to. People in this township have been asking us to provide composting services since well before I became commissioner. We have a lot of stormwater management in our CIP, but more necessary in the coming years. We have a CIP that we can't do every year due to limited staff resources and a CIP that we could fund at a higher level, given the amount of cash we have and how cheap it is to borrow, but we won't do it because of staff resources. We are stuck in a bad loop. Stay with me here. We give a conservative revenue estimate every year because our taxes are low and our revenues are low. That revenue estimate looks bad because we have high expenses that keep growing. We have a structural deficit. So we give direction to staff to say, do a no-growth budget. We can't grow. Look at this deficit that we're projecting. And then, we have a big fund balance that miraculously, despite our projection, continues to grow. And I agree with Commissioner Zelloff. We have a ton of cash in the bank. It doesn't make sense to add more cash to that pile. Your government holding onto your money is the least efficient use of that money. But the answer is not to keep things flat and keep stuck in this loop. The answer is growth. The answer is more services. The answer is more amenities. The answer is improvement to our township. The answer is to take a very proactive, long look. Don't just wait for windfalls like ARP to do large visionary projects. Do them now with the money that we have, and, as Commissioner Sinai says, do moderate tax increase. We don't want to surprise our residents, but we do need to shift this policy. If we're going to sit on this cash, we need to improve what we are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Courtney. Anybody else? Well, since I really wanted to finish before midnight, I'd be extraordinarily brief because there are a lot, you know, excellent comments that have been made. And I think if you dialed back and picked up comments that I made two years ago, I said, I assure people we would be having a tax increase, a tax increase in 2020. I said the same in 2021, and we're sitting here in 2022, and we're looking at the situation with that difficult aspect of the decision, saying, we have a fund balance in excess of that of which we set, and we have the ARP money. And just as Commissioner Sinai indicated, it's difficult then to go back to people and say, you know, give us more. And it is also true that the concept of paying down debt is something that has been, at least something I've advocated for over 10 years. At the time that I did it, I got a lot of flack from my, many of my colleagues. Debt today is, or the expense of having money today is much less than it has ever been. And we are looking now, I think, in our budget, about 13% of our budget goes to debt service. Back then, when I first started advocating lowering our debt, it was about 17%. It's probably lower now than it's ever been, and our debt is lower now than it's ever been. But a point that was made, I guess, last year when we were talking about borrowing money, is money is now cheaper than it's ever been. So we find ourselves, or at least I find myself, in contemplating this in an awkward situation. For years, advocating lower the debt because it's been debt and pensions which have strangled municipalities, that all of a sudden, given the economics of the world, doing that may not make sense at this exact moment. Therefore, the question is then, you know, what do we do? Because it is inevitable that we are going to have to have a tax increase because the expenses are going to continue to go up. And I would disagree with my colleague to my right, a couple seats over, that we have gone on a no-growth budget because we have added on a number of initiatives. Quite frequently, we do so. I recall when we redid all the libraries and all, and we had, for each library that came forward, it was a struggle and a debate in order to move forward with that. The Kinwood Heritage Trail, how many times do we reference that this evening? I remember hours and hours debate. If you recall, there's a dirt path that also goes along with it, as well as the regular walking path. And to go ahead and argue that that's a great amenity that will serve everybody well for years and years to come. And so we have consistently had the ideas of going forward and trying to have appropriate amenities that serve all the communities. We have debated endlessly here of the Palm and other areas in Ardmore, items that we've been committed to. We heard about affordable housing. We're sitting on money for affordable housing, not because of anything other than the difficulty in making a decision what to do with those funds. So we have a growth concept that's there, and we've also had a board generally that has recognized, if you want to make an omelet, you got to break some eggs. We have not been afraid to go ahead and do that when it is necessary. But as it has been repeated to us endlessly, the pandemic isn't over. There are a lot of people that we heard that continue to suffer in connection of what's going on with them economically, and so it becomes a little bit difficult to say, have a tax increase when we're looking at excess funds and $25 million that we have to spend. It becomes hard to do that at this point in time, but I assure you that it will occur, and it will occur in increments. It's not, we're not going to have to have a 20% increase in any one given year, but it will happen without a doubt over time. The question mark is whether it is at this point in time now to do it. And it's not an easy decision. It truly isn't. I think the points are well-made by everybody. But at this point, where we are right now, ah, at 12:00, is that we have a motion that's, you know, currently on the floor. And Commissioner Sinai, I stated that you'd have an opportunity to make your motion. I think that would be the time. I suspect that generally, we have a motion, a second, then discussion. We've already done the discussion part, so why don't we go to give you the opportunity to make your motion?
Thank you, President Bernheim. And so in the spirit of everyone noticing that our chief financial officer, Mr. Trav, is generally a conservative budgeter, I would like to propose a 3% tax increase, which would mean amending the 4.19 mils to 4.316 mils. Second.
Okay. We've had discussion. Does anybody feel the need for any more? Seeing none? Let me just check up the screen. Seeing none, then?
So I, yes, I would say that, I would ask Commissioner Sinai, you know, you're making something that is significant, and we don't have the full board here.
May I respond? Go ahead, briefly.
So I would say that the hour is late, but this is the only opportunity, given that we have to advertise it. And last week, we said we would like to not have this. I said that I'd like to not have this on consent because I intend to make a motion.
So if I can respond?
Ever so quickly.
Of course. Commissioner Sinai, we can adopt any motion on the tax rate up until the moment we adopt the budget. I think that that can be verified by our township manager. We do not have to make that decision tonight.
All right.
A very brief response, if I may. Thank you. In which case, we could make an amendment to it at any point up until the final vote. Thank you.
All right. So there's a motion that's on the floor. All right, I'm going to call the vote. The motion is for, what's a 3% increase, which goes to 4.316 mils? Is that correct? All those in favor of the...
It's a roll call.
Yes. You know what? Excellent idea, if somebody wants to do that.
No, I prefer this honestly. Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Aye.
Ms. Durbin.
Yes.
Mr. Gavron.
No.
Ms., Ms., mm-hmm, sorry. Ms. Kramer, skipping names.
Yes.
Mr. McComb.
No.
Mr. McKeon.
No.
Ms. O'Neill.
No.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Zelloff.
Nay.
Mr. Bernheim.
No. We don't have Mr. Grimes?
No, Mr. Grimes is not there.
That'd be seven to six.
The motion passes seven to six.
It's not a way to run the government, five after 12. Just isn't.
Okay. So that will be the advertisement?
All right.
With that, that then brings us to whether there is any unfinished or new business that anybody wishes to raise. Seeing none, then at that point, generally, if anyone's ever paid attention, I always say, "Thank you for your hard work this evening." And I mean that. And then I say, "Good night." But now I will amend that to have a good morning and the rest of your day, and we are hereby adjourned.